The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, I kindly ask all members of the joint body to please put away cell phones. If you need to conduct personal business during the meeting, please make a motion for a recess. For those participating by phone, please ensure your phone is muted unless you are speaking. And when speaking, please remember to state your name for the benefit of those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The cameras located at the back of the council chambers above the clock. Our meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Order in accordance with municipal Wassalla Municipal Code 2.04.090. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful discussion, I respectfully request that the bodies observe the following guidelines. Please seek recognition before speaking. No member may speak a second time on a matter until all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. These rules are in place to ensure that everyone's right to speak is respected and to prevent any one voice from dominating the discussion. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cawthorne, here. Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson, are you online? Councilmember Johnson? He may join us later in the meeting. At this time, he's absent. Councilmember Johnson, are you online?
Online.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Vlach is absent and excused unless objection is raised. Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Seals?
Here.
Commissioner Langill?
Online.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner DeYoung?
Here.
Commissioner Stafford?
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor, of both bodies. Commissioner Vlach is absent and excused. Commissioner Langill is participating telephonically as well as Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, ma'am. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilperson Rubio, would you lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. We are now at persons to be heard, which is a time for members of the public to share their views with the body. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement.
I wanted to make certain, I took your word seriously about making certain that I could address you.
You have three minutes, and please begin your testimony by stating your first and last name and if you live in the city.
Thank you. My name is John Claprick, and I have been doing business within the city and/or near the city for 40 years, but I live just outside the city of Wassalla. I want to thank you, first of all, for giving me the attention to listen. I feel very privileged over the years that people don't just hear, but they listen. And that makes me feel special, especially after 40 years of a taxpayer in the city of Wassalla. I'm here to express excitement about a rewrite, as I see here tonight's ordinance repealing and reenacting Wassalla Municipal Code Title 16. I have been representing small business in Wassalla for 40 years, particularly the downtown area, and we feel that it has been very restrictive and very anti-growth in bringing it into the town. So as I look at page one of 182, we feel my constituents, my businesspeople say 182 pages is still too strong. I know I'm half up with my time. My point is, I highly encourage you to look for areas that is easier on business. It has been said by our mayor here and our council in the past that if it doesn't enhance small business, if it doesn't enhance the residents of Wassalla, and it doesn't enhance sales tax, we're getting rid of it. That common sense test is still in those 180 pages, particularly page five of 12. Per Councilmember Crafton, August 24th, planner's determination was removed from the sentence that states when requirements entitle the downtown overlay district's standards conflict, it is strictly back to the more restrictive position. So that tells me it's back again. If we have a common sense planner, it's in the area and say, here's Walmart, here's Fred Meyer, here's cars, but you're different, it's not inclusive. We got to go back to the more restrictive. And it just tells the small business person is that it still lays back on rules and regulations, and we're not going to look at common sense. So I highly encourage you to look at Title 16 and whatever you want to name it to make it easier on small business expanding.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close public comment, and we are now at new business. Madam Clerk, please read the item by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Discussion and possible action on the rewrite of Wassalla Municipal Code Title 16, land development code that repeals and reenacts Title 16 to substantially change the uses permitted in each zoning district, the review enforcement and permitting procedures, the planned unit development, landscaping, parking, conditional use and variance procedures, and the design standards imposed by the city.
Is there a motion to enter the committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor, I move we enter a committee of the whole for the purpose of discussing the rewrite of Wassalla Municipal Code Title 16. Those participating in committee of the whole would be the administration, the city council, and the planning commission, and the staff, of course, including our attorney.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
It has been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Crafton to enter the committee of the whole. Is objection to the motion? Hearing none, we are now in committee of the whole. The time is 6:08 PM. Holly? I guess you're up.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all for being here. I know that it's been a while since we've met as a joint body, but I think that this will be a really productive meeting and will hopefully get us to the place where my marching orders are to go and prepare an ordinance for introduction, and we'll be very near the end. I'm going to go grab the clicker.
Councilmember Langill and Johnson, do you have the PowerPoint presentation? Would you like it emailed to you?
This is Mr. Langill. I don't have the PowerPoint, but I don't know that I need it. I can see the screen.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I will work hard to declare what page we're on as we move through the PowerPoint. We are not going to go through this PowerPoint page by page. This is almost a 40-page PowerPoint. So I will just say, one of the reasons why it's such a long PowerPoint is it is really trying to provide you a division-by-division breakdown of the changes that council and the commission recommended and made. I'm not going to, I just wanted you to have something in big print that sort of gave you a way to navigate through all of that. The other thing I'm going to say is, the last draft that you had of Title 16 was, I think, 150 pages. Now, mind you, because I had comments in this draft, if it's helpful, that pushes the page number much higher because you lose, you have this large margin on the side for those comments, because the way I structured this particular set of materials, I gave you the Title 16 with the changes, or the substantive ones, in comment bubbles down Title 16. I also gave you a memo that had the changes and flagged them for you. And so you'll see a significant reduction in pages. The other thing that made this longer, besides adding some definitions and some of the wordsmithing, was the addition of a chapter 16.72. This chapter deals with communication towers and facilities. And this was added, and we'll talk about it when we get there, but this was really added as an option, something for council to consider, because we haven't been regulating communication towers in the way that others have, and there's very specific and sort of strict guidelines on how they're regulated according to the FCC. So with that, I will delve in. A lot of the changes that were made were formatting and language changes. More formatting and language changes will come between now and... Okay. There we go. All right. So a lot of those changes, a lot more fine tuning with the ordinance. When I add things like chapter 16.72, it sort of throws everything off. I took out sections, I added other ones, so that will all be cleaned up in that final ordinance presentation. Over the course of this, I kept trying to get it clean as I went along, and that was really a futile effort, because any time I'd make a change or something would get added, a lot of times it would throw something else off. So we ultimately decided we would wait until we completed, until we got our, sort of the final go-ahead. And in addition, some of the language and stylistic changes, we've been working to follow the styles of the city and make sure that we get those as consistent as we can. But I've been relying on legal assistance staff and paralegal to avoid any additional costs, because our publication, our code publication company also has the style listings for the city and does a review and sort of cleanup in that regard. So we're, I talked with the clerk, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, but we're going to rely on them for that sort of final run-through. During Phase Two, though, and maybe before then, one of the things that the clerk and I did talk about is some of the styles that the city relies upon that may be inconsistent throughout the code or may need to, are just, are need to be updated in general. That might be a project that council sees coming before them in the near future. So the divisions, I'm just going to read the divisions off really quick so that we're all sort of grounded in the same realm. I would like to run this meeting much more informally than we often do so that I am getting the feedback. Otherwise, I don't want you to wait till the end, basically, because I think that it's too big of a project for us to wait till the end. So you can kind of jump in as it comes up. If that gets too unruly, we will, the mayor and I can sort of regroup. Okay. So we have Division One, which is our general division. So we've divided, as you remember, we divided Title 16 into divisions to provide the public with a little bit better blueprint of where they're going. So Division One is your general provisions, definitions, rules of construction, and exceptions. Division Two is your zoning districts, and it describes the city's seven zoning districts, including locations and permitted uses in those districts. Division Three is your overlay district, which primarily just deals with your downtown overlay districts. Division Four is your use and development regulations. This includes density and dimensional standards, signs, landscaping, non-conforming lots and buildings, as well as a chapter for water, sewage, and drainage systems. So a lot of what we did with Title 16, too, is take things that were embedded in other areas and place them more deliberately. And I think that was something that we've talked about with the planning commission and the council, you know, creating a section on water, sewage, and drainage systems instead of spattering those regulations throughout the code. Division Five is permits and reviews, and that's the process for applying for permits, including administrative, temporary use, and conditional use permits. Division Six is administration and procedures, and that's where we get sort of our administrative provisions, or provisions regarding how administration is set up, or enforcement and appeals proceedings for the commission and feeling officers. So I'm just going to delve right in, and I think I'm going to, so we are on page five. So the purpose and intent statement was changed to consolidate some of the objectives and references to growth, were changed to development per council wishes, and this was designed to provide a more accurate statement of council's directive. Does anybody have any comments regarding, changes regarding the purpose statement? Okay. The location of the comp plan for viewing was changed to the planning planner's office rather than the city clerk's office. And I think one thing that's nice here is you're just saying how detailed the commission and council's involvement was in some of these provisions to fine tune it in a way that really made sense. There were some general comments, and I'm not going to go through those, but I wanted to make sure that you had them. Councilmember Graham, I think you had a comment regarding reference to the Wassalla Development Code. So in order, for that one, what we did was, we went and removed references to the Wassalla Development Code. So nobody was confused, like they were looking for some other document somewhere that isn't this code. However, we preserved reference to the ability to call it the Wassalla Development Code, because as you, and so that just, that stays the same in this, in the, in chapter 1605, but it's not repeated throughout the code. The nice thing about that is, when you're in your comp plan hearings and when you're talking about the code and you're trying to talk about it as a body, when you say Title 16, now to us, this is like common language, you know, we refer to it. But outside the confines of this room, it doesn't hold the same meaning. So that's one of the reasons why most communities have a zoning code or a development code or they have some reference. The only other comment I had in these initial ones was that desire to really get our pronouns and our references on that style for inconsistent, which the clerk's office, and I will work on. Then we jump into definitions. We had a lot of information, a lot of feedback from both the commission and council on definitions. And we continue to sort of, one of the, one of, I think one of the most productive sessions I had was actually with Maureen Graham. She is the sales tax accountant, I believe is her official title, for the city of Wassalla. And one of the great things that she did is she really looked at definitions and not just what they were, but how they were referred to in the code, and helped take us to the next step, and tried to imply all of the practical applications of the definitions, which is something the commission and council had also tried to do, to make sure that we are defining what we need to define. I still struggle with definitions in the sense that there's a real desire to define everything. And when we define everything, we kind of, we can, it can really impede the simplicity of the code. And yet, if we don't define enough, then it becomes more confusing. So I'll continue to look at that and see, do we really need to define some of these common terms, or do we just see how they play out? If we, you know, and so that's a balance we're always looking at. But the other thing we did was, a couple of the council members, I think one of those suggestions was group things together. So if you're looking at animals, you're looking, you know, you're going to the same place in the definitions, and you're not, okay. And so you're not going through over and over again. And we were experiencing that as a group, you know? We'd be looking for a definition for building height, and we couldn't find it because it was under B, but if it had been height of building, we maybe would have found, you know, it's that type of thing. So just, we've just been playing with it and trying to use it and see how, like, how that works. So now, all of those, you know, so for example, it'll be listed as animal, semicolon, domestic, instead of domestic animals. But the other thing we did, which lengthened the code, but I think is helpful, but I do want to get your thoughts on this, is we didn't just leave domestic animals out. We just added domestic animals, sea, domestic, semicolon, animals, which seems like extra words, but if you're searching, if someone is using this electronically, which is how many will be accessing your code, they can type in domestic animals, they can type, they can see animals and just go through the list, they can type in animals, semicolon, domestic. So there's a lot of search, ways to search that is going to land them where they need to be. Does, but it does add length, you know, because every term that we do that with is both defined and then referenced, if that makes sense. So one thing I would like to do, if it's okay, Mayor, is just sort of get a feel. Do you like this, or rather, is there somebody who objects to this and thinks the added length is not worth the double reference?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say how much I liked it. When I was reading through it this time around, I mean, to me, I know we had somebody comment that, hey, we want to show it as possible, but when you look at it, you go, and you look at things like that, you look at the district use chart, and you go, the district use chart is four or five pages or something like that. You're like, that's, that's only lengthening the code because of the way it's laid out in a table format, and we have a few different tables in here. But I really liked that, because I remember in the past trying to find something about exotic animals, and it was, it was actually difficult to find exotic animals. And you go look at animals and you go, okay, great, I found it. And then in actuality, there was a whole definition for exotic animals somewhere else in the code. So putting it under all, essentially one section, to me clarified it, so that if somebody was trying to find it, they're going to see everything right next to each other and go, oh, I'm going to look at all of these and make sure I'm covering all my bases here. So to me, it makes a lot of sense to do that, to do that style of heading, essentially.
Great. And I see a lot of head nodding, so that's good. Okay. And there is a lot of that. There are, the idea, you know, we put things from the use chart, we actually say it in words now. So while we're saying something twice, in essence, we're providing an easier way to access it. But that probably adds, potentially, I think about 20 pages. So we probably cut Title 16 down, and if we, you know, if we exclude chapter 16.72, which now has added 12 more pages, so we'll talk about that, but we probably cut it down closer to 70 pages at the end of the day, which, again, I'm not sure how much that matters. It's all about the simplicity, but I do think that's an accomplishment. That's a lot of words gone and a lot of regulation gone. So the other thing, council noted the importance of revisiting definitions included in the downtown overlay district during Phase Two. And so one of the things that's always a push and pull with this is leaving things in the code that we're not happy with, you know? And so there is some of that. And a lot of that surrounds the downtown overlay district, definitions like adult business, which I do think needs to be revisited. And though, but when you do your comp plan, you will see your, you will look at your zoning districts, you will redefine the boundaries of those districts, most likely that often happens as a byproduct of a comp plan. At that point, you may have a mixed-use district, you may have, you know, you may have a commercial district that looks different or things you want to emphasize. That is the time, in my opinion, to really look at those definitions and refine them. You may even repeal your downtown overlay district, at which point a large amount of those definitions that appear nowhere else in the code will disappear. So that is, my recommendation is that we read them through, made sure they were lawful, eliminated redundancies, and tried to clean up some that we just couldn't resist. But otherwise, you know, it's just really important that we continue to flag that that is still needing your attention for what I would call Phase Two. Does anybody have an aversion to that? Or are there any particular definitions where you're like, yes, but let's get into that one?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Seals?
Yes, Holly. There's a definition that was recommended several times, it's not in here, that I think will be important for the future. Trees outside the library that were taken down are an example. But the biggest example is the vetch that is taking over the valley, especially Wassalla. So I think we need to have a invasive species definition in our definition.
May I change out your mic? I don't think your mic is either on or it's not working.
It's on.
Okay. So I just wanted to note that we missed adding an invasive species definition, and we will add that before the, we will add that to the ordinance. Does anybody have an objection to adding an invasive species definition? And again, when you have the ordinance, that'll be a time to really delve into the substance of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Since we're diving into a few of these, I had a couple questions on some of these. The first one was hotel-motel. Again, we went over so many of these, and now I'm trying to remember two. My understanding is I, this one says six or more guest rooms. I thought I had mentioned five, because I know there was a place where we talked about four or five, and my knowledge is four, anything four or less units is considered a residential. Five or more units is where it changes to commercial property. So was there a reason why we went with six on here? Otherwise, I'd like to see five in place right there. Otherwise, it leaves a weird gap there.
And I think that we used what was, I think we had, we had the same number that was there previously. So we can absolutely, we can move that to five. I think that that was, I feel like there was another recommendation. There was somebody, maybe the planning commission maybe mentioned five, or it might have been the administration to, you know, something to consider. But yes, what's reflected here now is not a change, so we can move it to five. Does anybody have any objection to moving hotel-motel to five, which would then influence, I mean, that would, you know, and we'll make sure that that's consistent with short-term rental as well and campground, you know? Okay.
If I could continue, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Another one that isn't in here at all, but somebody had brought up to me, was we don't, we spent a lot of time talking about families and what the definition of family was. There was a number cap on it, and I understand there's this extent of, and the comments you had put in here as the reason why we had a number on it was because the previous planner essentially said, hey, there are times where if you cross a certain number of people in a household, it can start becoming a burden upon your neighbors. Because I think about that one house in the neighborhood, you know, that has eight people living there, and they've got five cars in the driveway, and cars are spilling out into the roadway all the time. So there kind of is, that is, I believe, what the intention was behind having that. So from what I understand is we're basically removing the number and we're just defining what determines a family. But have, is there a reason why we don't have anything in here around what foster care is, and if foster care would constitute needing different requirements if you, if you run foster care? Because the definition of family would actually not constitute foster care, from what I understand, because technically foster care is not adopted at that point.
And it would include only up to three additional unrelated people.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, these definitions, we went through the definitions of family in other communities in response to the desire to have both the sort of traditional, for lack of a better word, familial relationships, and the, and I, by that I mean marriage, adoption, blood, you know? And then the adding additional unrelated people, which we found in a lot of communities. So you're sort of creating, we're addressing the issue that we had before. I have to think about what the implications of foster care and whether or not you're, you know, you're defining. So if you play it out, let's play it out. Um, and then the adding additional unrelated people, which we found in a lot of communities. So you're sort of creating, we're addressing the issue that we had before. I have to think about what the implications of foster care and whether or not you're, you know, you're defining. So if you play it out, let's play it out, you have a single-family dwelling with five, with, um, you know, two guardians and three foster children. Are we, do we want them to be bigger than, I just, I'm not sure. How does that change the composition? So you have three additional unrelated people. So it's one, unrelated people living together as a single independent housekeeping unit.
So I'm hearing whispers, people saying assisted living. I'm not intending to put restrictions on it. I just want to make sure that nobody's going to get flagged for concerns if they house foster care. Because I've known people that have had foster care, they have three or four children of their own, and they bring on three or four more children. You know, you could, you could end up with a pretty large household, uh, pretty quickly. I think more so the concern when we're talking about a large family is when you end up with a lot of adults in the household. You know, I know somebody, it's two adults, husband, wife, and then they have six children, you know? That eight is not really a concern as we discussed it here. But now if we have, you know, four, two adults and four adult children living in the home, you know, and they're all driving, that's when it starts to become concerning, because now you have six potential cars in a driveway that usually start spilling out. I know we had somebody in my neighborhood that basically spent the summer parking their vehicles in the road, which was a concern. It made it difficult to traverse the neighborhood. So that's more so my lines of thinking. But I'm, like I said, I'm hearing somebody whisper about assisted living with that.
No, I mean, I, I don't-
Foster care falls under-
Well, and I don't think you wanted to necessarily, right? Because I think we're talking about, I mean, that relationship is a, is a unique one for foster care. It's an excellent question. I guess instead of trying to think through it here, I will just make a note.
Could you see if other communities have something like that? If they don't, then that's okay. It just was a question that got brought up to me.
I didn't see it in the communities that we were, that I was looking at, but that doesn't mean, I mean, I can do a search and see how communities that do you address it, if they do address it. But we also, you know, we have the opportunity here to be innovative and, and really think through things that maybe haven't come up before. So, and maybe it's a, maybe there's space here to refer or, or exclude children from the number, you know? Um, but I just have to think through, what are the implications of excluding children from the number? So, which means I have to play out exactly how we use family throughout your code, what the implications are, and then go back and look at the foster care component. Um, but that's, that's my thought, is maybe there's, what happens if we, um, don't put a restriction on the number of children? You know, and, uh, or the relationship of those children? Do we then create a loophole for what would be assisted living facilities for underage children? You know, I don't know the answer to that, but I will find out.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
So to follow up on Mr. Crafton's, uh, concern there, I would like to see, uh, if there are any regulations from the state regarding the number of foster children that could live in a two, uh, caretaker household. Uh, and then perhaps bring that to the next planning commission meeting where they're going to review this and, uh, see if there are restrictions. Because I know if you're going to have foster kids in the house, you have to have a certain amount of square footage per child. You have to, there's, there's a lot of things involved there, but I'm just not sure if there's a, uh, a limitation on the number there. But, but knowing the background of that would be helpful. And as far as assisted living goes, assisted living buildings are permitted by the state. Uh, so they are specific, uh, as to what sort of assist they are doing. Some are for seniors, some are for developmentally disabled. But those actually have a specific, uh, you know, business license from the state and are inspected by the state. So, and so I, I think that aspect kind of covers itself there. But I would like to find out more about the foster home situation.
Mayor?
One item?
Uh, Commissioner Landsho, one of my concerns with this is our family. Is there a conflict as far as the number of family when you have some homes in, within the city limits that are not on city sewer, so they are on septic systems? And I have seen this in our neighborhood where you end up with 12 people staying in a house, and you know their septic system will not cover that. So that's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we're always balancing is the reasons why we define these terms and land use is because of the burden placed on infrastructure, which I think is what Commissioner Landsho is getting at in part. Um, so we, we have to weigh that with policy considerations regarding large families or foster care units. And I do, I will also look at assisted living facilities, um, which we define both, uh, you know, we break down the assisted living facility definitions, which includes small, transient, small, and large. We break those down by, at, based on their use, based on their, their burden, I guess I would say, on the, um, the infrastructure neighborhoods and the character that stems from their size. And the, and mother and other have a transient population or they have a non-transient population. They were not intended to, so, I mean, I think I just, the foster care question is such an interesting one, because none of these were intended, much like the state's licensing is not intended to, uh, to address these homes that might have more than, um, one or two foster children. But I don't even know, I can't even say, count, um, council member Crafton, I can't tell you how many foster kids can go into a single home, you know? And so the suggestion, we look at state regs is, I think, helpful. We may be talking about an issue that is a non-issue, you know, I just don't know. Oh, but the planner may have something to add.
Um, hello. So, okay. This is Cindy Wellman, City Planner. I just wanted to add one part to that. So under the, uh, the infrastructure, such an excellent point on this for both the size of the family as well of, you know, whatever that is constituted, I, I think it's great that you'll be going back and looking any legal implications. But I did want to mention parking. One of the things that we do not require, um, is that we don't have minimum amount on the single-family dwellings when we're permitting them for parking. So that's just something to think about when, um, and I don't know that we could technically put the limitation on the family size. That, I'm glad you'll be looking into that, but I did want to mention the parking aspect of it.
Would not the covenants of a neighborhood cover parking?
Well, covenants of a neighborhood will certainly cover a lot of these things. And so when you're thinking about what you're regulating, and as we go through the provisions and as you look at the final ordinance, it is, one of the things you're looking at is the policy behind municipal regulation juxtaposed to HOAs and covenants and restrictions and, um, and the more overarching regulation you might impose through your districts. You know, and of course permitting. These are all, these are difficult things to weigh, and there's no right answer. I mean, and one of the things that I did when I went through here is I really tried to minimize regulations, except in the ways that council or the commission suggested that they needed, those regulations needed to remain intact or we needed to add more, you know? And so that's, um, the only exception to that is the communication tower provision, which we will, our chapter, which we'll talk about.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, my, my overall feeling protects the family. And by putting in restrictions in the number of people, I do not think that's a protection to the family. Um, I believe that parking, tour are, I realize that those are problems, but I think there may be different ways to address those rather than trying to restrict family size.
I mean, I don't think, I, I mean, I, I just want to be clear, councilmember Johnson, I think what the, the discussion is less about, um, size at this point, uh, what I hear is we're trying to figure out, the definition right now is limited to, for family members. Um, and I think this stemmed in part from one of your comments, um, before. It includes blood adoption and, um, now I'm drawing a blank, what's the other provision? Well, I think we're talking about whether or not that should include foster care as an express-
Marriage, adoption.
Blood, marriage, and adoption. I think it was blood, I just forgot. So those are the three that are there, those are the three that are standard when family is defined to include that sort of, um, and I'm just going to call it a traditional family definition as opposed to a number-based definition. Um, we do, we sort of split the baby, you know? So family is defined as any number of people living together in a dwelling unit, unrelated by blood, marriage, or adoption, and including up to three additional unrelated people, or one to four unrelated people living together as a single independent housekeeping unit. So you could change that to one to eight, which might solve the foster care situation. Um, we could leave it as one to four. This was trying to kind of accumulate all of the comments that we had heard. Um, and so to include the sort of blood, marriage, adoption definition alongside a number so that we are capturing the intent of sort of the size of family.
Madam Mayor.
So we can go up to more.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I feel like we're beating a dead horse. It is not our job to regulate this. The state regulates foster, regulates assisted. This sums up perfectly. I don't think we need to knock on doors and count family members. Um, obviously, if there's some kind of problem, they're going to come and complain, right? And then we can investigate to see if they're out of code or have too many adults or too many kids or whatever that might be. But again, the city's not in the business of trying to regulate this.
Okay, so that, that's, I think, very helpful. I'm going to, I mean, the one thing we can do is just explore adding the word related by blood, marriage, adoption, or foster care. Well, and they'll just see, because that, you know, and then, then we'll-
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I wasn't trying to put any number on this one. I just was curious about the situation of a foster care, because the definition we have in here, um, again, there's nothing about foster care that, again, but necessarily, you're not generally what we'd consider a family when you have foster children. It might be a part of your household, but they're not technically a part of your family yet. So I don't know if adding foster care to the family definition is what we need at that point. But actually, I also wanted to men, uh, just kind of add on to what the mayor was talking about with covenants, conditions, and restrictions. As far as I've seen, I've never seen covenants address parking concerns. Um, and then the other issue we run into is, uh, situations where, one, most covenants expire after a certain amount of time. Usually, there's a clause in there that after 30 years, unless they're renewed, they expire. And even if there is something in there, unless you have a homeowner's association, the only way to actually enforce the covenants is through civil court, which nobody ever wants to go through. And then the third aspect of it is, is I'm seeing more and more neighborhoods, Caroline and I, for instance, have a neighborhood that never had covenants added. Basically, because we're inside city limits, the only thing that binds anything to our neighborhood is our one districting. And so that's more so my, my concern is, is, is around parking would be the only situation where, where we have, uh, concerns. So a-again, I don't know, I know, I heard Mr. Seals say as well, I don't know if we can really put restrictions around parking in, uh, single-family zoning. It's very difficult to do. I just don't know if we need something in there that just says, hey, if you're going to be parking stuff on the street and leaving it on the street all the time, that's a different conversation. Like, for, again, the example I have is we had a neighbor that literally parked his RV in the road all the time. It lived there all summer long.
Madam Mayor, did you do a complaint?
There's nothing we could do. There was no, there's nothing-
Did you do a complaint?
There's nothing I have a complaint about, is what I'm saying. There's, there's, there's nothing to do.
Yeah, I don't think that it's, it's necessary. Like I said, more regulations for the code is not what we're looking for. We're trying to make it more convenient in the sense of our residents. And again, businesses within it. So I just think tying more into it and trying to find the definitions to be, you know, tweak this, tweak that. Um, ultimately, the end goal is to, to make it less.
One thing too to note, I think this will be really important just to keep in mind, when you have your final districts, like once you've gone through your comp plan and your final districts, because you're going to be really revisiting and creating those districts and really thinking through, that'll be another time to revisit some of these things and say, do we want to regulate, you know, this differently or change parking or? Um, and here, we really didn't change those things unless we had direction, much like the number eight, you know? Like that people were like, why number eight? And while that was based in part on the planner's determination and consideration, eight was also a very popular number in your existing code, you know? So we would see it in those, um, uh, assisted living facilities that they may have been defined slightly differently. But, and so we didn't mess with those numbers unless the commission or council or the staff was, you know, had a reason or was very deliberate about it. That doesn't mean we can't, but that's one of the reasons why we didn't change things like that at this round, if we didn't have a reason. So I am going to move on to page seven.
Madam Mayor, if we could stay on this subject for just a minute, when you talk about the blood relative, there, that might need some definition. What does blood relative mean? With, with my great-great-great-grandfather's cousin, you know, comes to Alaska, can I put him in my house as part of a family relationship? Or do we want to say as a direct descendant within two generations?
Say so.
Just food for thought, I don't think we really want to get into that right now. But I, I do think when you say blood relative, you know, theoretically, we're all descended from the same, uh, blood relatives, so.
No, but, well, I think generally speaking, some communities define them and they'll say like, two, two things removed from thee, and I thought, do you want to? Because I, you know, it really was a, do you want to? Are you going to? Okay, so I kind of feel like, so what I'll do, councilmember Graham, I'll leave it just blood, but it might be another point to bring up at the ordinance level, because I am seeing a, you know, I, I think that maintaining the simplicity is, it seems like there's a lot of support for that. But I do think that you can pull up five different communities, five different definitions of family, five different definitions of blood. Some will just say it, and some will actually define blood, and that's the, you know, question. Uh, it is also something you can sort of see how it plays out. And really, if you start to see an enforcement issue or a, uh, abuse of the definition blood, um, and through the, you know, then that is a, a great way to have, to ensure your regulations are necessary, you know? Because it might come back. You might have, might get a report from your enforcement officer that the definition of blood is being used to have families of 20 people in these small, single-family homes. And that's creating a burden on infrastructure and, um, stressor that we need to regulate. I don't know, how does that sit?
I don't have a feeling. By the way, I'm just saying that's something that could come up particularly, uh, since in the case of, uh, many Eastern European households, it's fairly common to have several different families living together, you know, in a very loose blood relationship.
Yeah. Well, and the, the reality is, if you show up on someone's doorstep and they say, that's actually my, um, cousin, or that's my brother, or that's, how often are we challenging those claims of relationship too? So that's, but, um, so. Um, okay, so one of the things that I noted, and this is kind of a big one, is that, so councilmember Johnson had requested further consideration of what constitutes a communication tower, and he did not know what he was asking me, because I know he probably intended that I just simply expand on the definition of communication tower. But in reality, when I started looking at what does constitute a communication tower? And how is that regulated and how silent our code was on that? Um, I got, did grow a little bit concerned that this is something that the city may want to regulate or at least provide that, those types of regulations for wireless communication facilities, because we have more of them. And because they do, they have, they can be very large. And so while, and there are specific, uh, there are specific exceptions to what- uh, there are specific exceptions to what, what we can regulate and the size we can regulate when we look at the FCC. And that's kind of changing. So I wanted to make sure that, um, we were, we're putting something in to say, hey, we are paying attention, and the city wouldn't inadvertently regulate something in a way that it is not permitted to regulate it. Um, there's a lot of considerations. For example, with these towers, we can't take into account, such as health implications, things like that. Those aren't things that a, a planning commission cannot consider. Um, and so having a chapter that sort of flags it and creates a review process specific for it may be helpful.
For those online, please mute your phone unless you're speaking.
So.
Madam Mayor? To Councilman Johnson.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, my, my original point was I didn't want to regulate how cam radio operates needing a special use permit for single, uh, residents.
And they don't, and so in the last draft I gave you, they would have been exempted from an administrative permit. They remain exempted from an administrative permit. So what we did in chapter sixteen point seventy-two, and here, we can just take a quick peek, um, because I don't want this chapter, one thing I will say is, this chapter might be, so we have choices to make. We can, it's a lot. It's twelve packed pages of pretty technical language designed to do what, um, what, uh, the Code of Federal Regulations requires us to do. So, um, we can, it's based primarily on Juno's, uh, code, just to make it easy. We can include it in our ordinance because this would be its home. We can exclude it, we can include it, and flag it for review later, sort of independently. Um, there are, you know, so we can take any of these approaches, or we can just delve in. But what I did do is, is include in the exceptions from the administrative permits, the exemptions from all, um, communication facilities, uh, communication, wireless communication facilities from the administrative permit process. Where, and actually, where, and actually, I have an alley that's required to do that. So we had them before, now we purposely and deliberately have them, and they're, they track the FAA's guidelines in the FCC. So, I don't know if you guys want to go through that chapter, or how you want to approach this chapter. I feel like this was sort of a big, we did not send you out there to draft another chapter of code. So, um, we can tackle this now, or you can just kind of look it over as part of Title sixteen and, and we can, you know, we can go through it later.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I tried getting into it. I was trying to look at what the other changes we had made first were. I almost wonder if, and, and if we've met the intent of what Mr. Johnson was wanting originally, if this might be a section of code that would be really great for the planning commission after Title sixteen is done, as an option to go comb through it and go, hey, this is actually really not necessary here. You know, our code meets the needs of what it's, of, of, of what it has already, or, you know, actually, that'd be a really good way for us to, to further dive into this, but I, I don't, I don't know if now would be the great time to start getting into it myself. I mean, like I said, it was, like you said, it's pretty technical. I wasn't able to fully read through it in preparation for today's meeting. But again, my thought would be to let the planning commission do this as a separate section at a later date.
I'm okay with that. And one of the things I can do in the administrative permit section is I think I can tie those exemptions directly to federal law, or I can just go through and name them so that we know, um, you know, there, which, again, it's, the, the, what was helpful is making sure that they're being read in conjunction with one another, so. Let me try to just, I mean, if that is something, does everybody else agree, would you like to see this out, um, for now? And then have it come as a separate ordinance? I probably will, I might even put sixteen seventy-two in the ordinance with a reserved, um, so that we know where it's going and even put the title of it. So if it never happens, it never happens, and it's reserved, and it's sort of flagging, hey, we're not really regulating communication towers. Does that sound, I see a lot of heads nodding, so I'm gonna go that direction unless I hear any sort of vehement objection. Okay, so that is the direction we're gonna take. The planning commission, I'm sure, thanks you, Councilmember Crafton. All right. So, um, uh, so some of the definite, one of the definitions for the downtown overlay district that I found problem, problematic is the definition for commercial building. Commercial building's a very general term. To have a definition for that and try to define it, this is one of those places where I'm like, and I'm not sure we need to define commercial building. We have a commercial district. They mean a lot of things. They mean different things to different people, but all we care about is what we're regulating. So, we don't need to always define that unless we're regulating a commercial building in a very specific way. And the only place that's happening is in the overlay district. And so what I did for now is simply add language that specifies this definition is specific to the overlay district. But these, these are the types of definitions and uses that, when you're looking at the downtown overlay district and delving in as a matter of policy alongside the other districts, these are things that I don't, I mean, I, these are things that are counter to some of the best practices involving land use when we look at the downtown overlay district, the way that it regulates, and even, uh, regulates commercial buildings as a separate and distinct thing, and then goes on to name a bunch of things that we would all, I think, consider commercial, and then regulates them differently. That creates confusion.
Holly, the way I read this is, uh, when you say I added language specifying that it, it applies only to the downtown overlay district. Okay, does that mean that commercials only in downtown, or can we have it throughout the city?
Well, there's, there's, what we can and cannot do in a commercial building is only really defined specific to a commercial building. So, here, so.
I'm talking about the area, the downtown overlay. Is that the only area that, uh, commercial, or am I reading this entirely wrong?
No, so we have a definition for commercial that applies to everything, but the definition for a commercial building, right, is, that's the downtown overlay district that is divine, defining the building as a separate thing. So, at which, and regulating it differently. So we say, um, and that's why they have that very specific for purposes, so we're, we're just, we're not limiting how commercial building is referred to anywhere in this code, right? But what we're saying is, when that term is used in the downtown overlay district, it means all buildings in the downtown core area in the commercial zone, as defined as the area between Nelson Street to the Parks Highway and between Lucille Street to Crusoe Street. Because that language is already in there, and we don't want to limit a commercial building to that language for purposes of the entire code. So I just added the language for purposes of the downtown overlay district. So that's all I added. And it's just saying, here's this definition, it applies to that. It does not, do not try to apply this definition to anything else. We're allowed to use the word commercial building and mean whatever it means when it's being used, you know, and we have a definition for commercial, so. That is the, and we have a definition for building, and it's an important definition because our definition for building gives us our square footage for something that is or is not a building. So I would rather have people reading the code, read the word commercial building, and if they have to think about whether or not their building is a building, right? Does it meet the, I think it's one twenty square feet? Um, does it meet that? That's checked in their head, and if it's a commercial, if they have a reason to believe it's not commercial, I believe they can go to the code, here we go, fingers crossed, they can find commercial. You know, a use involving the storing, wholesaling, retailing, or rental of any article, service, or substance, cash, trade, or any form of compensation, and supporting activities in buildings. And that's a much more general, and I think when I play those, those general definitions out in each of the districts, that is much, those are the plain meanings, they make sense, they give direction, but not too much direction. Telling people what's happening between Nelson Street and the Parks Highway, in my opinion, is an extremely narrow way to regulate, and maybe that's where you want to go, but I think when you delve into that downtown overlay district, you'll really be able to consider those things. Does that, Mayor, does that answer that question? And then, so campground, um, was revised to avoid references to recreational vehicles and cabins and emphasize instead the temporary nature of the use. Um, the planning commission raised questions regarding yurts and whether or not they are tents or would be considered a more permanent structure. We tried to, um, look into that, so, and, um, Ms. Graham and the rest of the administrative staff really did look at the cabin, uh, and sort of revisited that. And, well, what do we do if you have a collection of cabins and they don't qualify as a short-term rental because they don't have, um, they don't have the requisite living facility, the kitchen and the bathroom, right? And are they a campground? So, um, at that point, then, we've sort of revisited it. I'm still sort of working on it, and so I have questions on, do you want a yurt to be included, um, in that definition? We are specifying, we kind of worked with the short-term rental definition a little bit, to fine-tune, and that will be coming in the next, uh, draft, just to fine-tune these distinctions between campground, short-term rental, hotel motel, you know, and those three things, mainly campground, short-term rental. So, um, now, a short-term rental, or where we're leaning based on input from the staff, is a short-term rental would include little cabins around where you have a main building that has, provides all of the other facilities and services, and they're rented out on a, um, for less than thirty days. Does, is everybody okay with that general direction? And that, that input really was based on sort of what issues were coming up and questions were asked of the administration, the sales tax team. Does that sound fair representation? I'm looking to your planner for, okay, to make sure I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth. Um, so correctional facility was changed to incorporate concerns by the commission that the definition would not on its space exclude dwellings where a person was monitored by a family member. Um, this definition derives primarily from Juno's code with the addition of the family member language. It is changed to read as follows, um, which is unusual, so I thought we'd talk about it because we're kind of breaking ground a little bit here, but I think it was a really helpful comment. And even though you don't see it reflected in a lot of codes, I think it, uh, had a lot of validity. So correctional facility means a facility providing for the imprisonment or physical confinement of persons under guard or twenty-four hours' physical supervision by a non-family member, such as a prison, jail, detention center, halfway house, or similar facility. One thing to note is, and I think it works, I thought it worked, even though we defined family to include people that are not, uh, necess, you know, that can include additional people, it really removes that commercial sort of, um, professional supervision piece, because even if there, you have someone in your house and they're not a member of, by blood, marriage, or adoption, and they're one of the extra people, I still think you're not a correctional facility, right? So we, we don't want, you know, we don't want to create that. So did that, uh, and I'll turn to the commission members, I make sure that that sort of reflects where you guys were trying to go. Okay. And that makes complete sense, and it's these funny things when we all grab code definitions and language and provisions from one another, and, you know, attorneys don't always, like anyone else, take a moment to take a breath and just think it through and apply it, and a lot of times, commissions and councils and administration aren't brave enough to be like, I'm not sure that that really works. So I feel like this is where Quessola is doing a great job.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. Regarding correction facilities here, you talk about the twenty-four-hour physical supervision. I would like to see twenty-four-hour change to daily physical supervision. Many of these halfway houses and other things are not staffed during day hours, they're only staffed at night. Uh, and then the, the residents check in and out or log in and out to go to work, or doctor's appointments, or whatever it is. But their, the requirement to have somebody onsite twenty-four hours, uh, you know, would kind of depend on what the state, uh, would want there, but it's still a correctional facility. If it's a halfway house and you're required to check in and spend the night there every night, to me, that would seem to be a correctional facility.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, I will double-check this, and with your agreement, I'll, I'll make sure I look at the state because I actually do think most of the correctional facilities are supposed to have twenty-four-hour staff. So there's somebody, in order to qualify as a correction, you know, for the state. So if we're gonna, so I just want to check and see. If not, it's a great point, though, we should confirm that. And if, if there are these halfway houses that don't have twenty-four-hour, um, not surveillance, but, um, a physical supervision, then, because I think that a lot of the ones that there are, and this is where we get into those assisted living facilities. You know, a lot of assisted living facilities will have staff supervising at times, but not have the twenty-four-hour staff supervision. And, um, they are different than a correctional facility as far as the, um, the protections afforded under the, um, ADA, you know, the Disability Act and all of those things, and how we can regulate land use, um, how we can apply those provisions to those facilities or, uh, homes. All right, so, um, the next one was the definition of church. So Councilmembers Crafton and Johnson raised the issue of church and making sure that we weren't inadvertently preventing sort of, um, you know, prayer circles, gatherings, or, um, meetings in homes by our definition of church. And so, we made, we simplified the definition and we clarified it to make sure it refers to a building or structure primarily intended for conducting organized religious services. Um, and so, and interestingly, I scanned all our comparable communities, and I really found Palmer's definition to be, um, the most direct, and so we, we basically will now have the same provision as Palmer. And that doesn't happen a lot. Palmer has a lot of provisions that have not been updated recently, so we weren't able to always parallel them, you know? But, when you can, at, one of the things that we heard from council and the commission was make it easier, and what's easier is if you're navigating a area and there's similarities on how things are regulated. If then you as a resident or visitor, you know, and or property owner, it can be a lot easier. It's also easier for the borough when you have to enter, uh, when there's interplay, because everything is similar. Now, again, there's not a lot of similarities, but when we have them, and we now have them with the definition of church, so. Okay, so we already just delved into family. We kind of jumped ahead on that one, so I'm gonna skip that one. Um, so I think, and maybe what I did, this might be, I thought that I changed the hotel motel definition, but it looks like I may have changed it to six, and I wonder if I had already changed it to five and then changed it back to six. I'm not really sure. So I just want to make sure you're all aware that I, I may have some confusion there. If you go back and you're like, oh, it was at five before, that that might be, that might be the reason why. I might have, um, corrected it, um, by, by not correcting it, so. Um, uh, one of the things Councilmember Crafton, you brought up was, uh, just to consider going to hotel and motel definitions, separate definitions. I spent a lot of time looking at this because the trend is to put them together. Um, and the reason why we're putting it, I, I think the trend is to put them together is the distinction that was often made was whether or not they had a lobby, right? A lot of the places that continue to have that distinction actually have. A lot of the places that continue to have that distinction actually have a reason for it. So I can go in and see what districts they're permitted in, they're different. I can see that the parking is different, that there are many elements that are different. Now, many, many communities just say hotel motel now, and that is because you could just, you know, so, sorry, it's because they don't regulate it differently. And Wassila has almost no regulations for hotel motel. You mentioned them and where they're allowed, but it's not that we have, we do not have specific use criteria for either a hotel or a motel. This may very well change in phase two. You know, in phase two, you may find yourself actually having more detailed regulations, and would, and have them in specific districts. And right now, we've created a structure in our definitions, and in how we refer to them as small, you know, large, and that gives you some flexibility and movement to regulate those without having to change anything else. But you may find yourself wanting to revisit this, depending on what you choose to do with them. But right now, you choose to do very little with them, so. So here's the definition, for example, just for your consideration, a motel means a group of attached or detached buildings containing individuals sleeping or living units with at least one parking space for each unit located on the same premises and convenient to each unit, all for temporary use by automobile tourists. You know it's old when they say things like automobile tourists, and transients, and all with access to outside without going through a lobby or common area. Also know it's old when they use words like autocorps. I'm not sure how many of you have seen an autocord lately, but it's not very very common, so. Hotels mean any building containing six or more rooms, intended or designed to be used, rented or hired out, or to be occupied for sleeping purposes only by transient. Again, we just tried to create a size difference and put them together, and we will move the number down to five, and, and, and then really think through if there's something more we wanna do, but we will create a list when you're going into phase two. And it'll have some basic questions like, do you want to regulate hotels motels? Is there a difference, you know, where you wanna see them?
Holly, could you update that language till we don't look like we're back in the nineteen twenties or forties, or whatever?
Yeah.
Fifties?
Fifties is what it sounds like, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think most of the reason why I do wanna specify the difference between the two of them is, I don't, hotels, you can, you can house more people and you go upwards. We are starting to see as well that hopefully we'll have some more hotels coming in. Sounds like, from our deputy administrator, was it six hotels shy we are here, out in the valley, somewhere around there? So I, I don't want to see us saying, hey, we're gonna permit this, and then somebody come in with a motel that only houses, or allows for, you know, twenty, thirty, thirty units versus a hotel that can put in a lot more there. I, I think there are times where we, maybe we wanna offer a motel as an option, but I think with the, the size of our city, we would be more apt to wanting hotels over a motel in the city. Not saying we don't want motels, I just think we'd start seeing more alignment with a city-style structure than rural structure, thank you.
Yeah, no, and I think that's a great point, I mean, but, so I think that is why you wanna make sure, because you don't, you haven't regulated them differently, you allowed them in the same districts, and you didn't really, you know, there wasn't any specific use criteria that we would apply to them, that's how I would say. So I think flagging it, it sounds like there may be very real reasons to regulate them, even when we just break them down by size. So now, are the definitions for hotel motel, just so you know, these are not your definitions. Yes, you can all take a, you know, but these were, I just wanted to bring back definitions that we traditionally see for motel and for hotel, you know, what we see. So, your definitions are hotel motel means a building containing six, or five or more guest rooms, intended, used, or designed to be used, rented out, or occupied by guests or guests for less than thirty consecutive days for sleeping purposes and for compensation. A hotel, a, a large hotel motel means a hotel motel with more than ten guest rooms. A small hotel motel means a hotel motel with five or more, but less than ten guest rooms. And at, and under the hotel motel, you have your short-term rentals. So, and they're all based on size. So you go up to five, five or more, but less than ten, ten or more. You know, so, and this is one of the reasons why we do this, and your definition for short-term rental, remember, includes a bed and breakfast. And the reason why we do this is creating a regulatory structure where you have short-term rental owners throwing some yogurt in the fridge, because previously, providing breakfast was the difference, right? And yet, regulating them differently, even though the burden on the infrastructure is not necessarily different, than going up to someone who calls themselves a motel versus somebody who calls themselves a, you know, a nothing, and just kind of lists them out, you know, and then creates, then, you know, creates this play on the definition in order to be a short-term rental. If the only thing different is what they, they're, they're throwing yogurt in the fridge, or that they've called themselves a motel instead of a hotel, or a motel instead of a, you know, a lodge, or a inn, or, you know, and then, then the regulations are just interfering with how they conduct business, and not necessarily regulating conduct based on burden. So I took the direction from council and commission to say, limit our regulations to what we're regulating, what we need to regulate. So that's, that's the difference right now, that's how it's structured. So if we play with one, we all should play with all of them, because they all sort of come together to regulate this transient thirty days or less use of property for commercial purposes in the city. Does that make sense? Okay. So interested party, so definition for interested party was revised to require that a person participate by filing a position statement or written argument before the decision-making body. This eliminates the potential for new arguments being raised on appeal that were not presented to the initial decision-maker. This is important, we'll talk about this as we go through the administrative permitting process, but one of the reasons why this is important is it doesn't, so what, quasi-judicial proceedings that allow unfettered access to the public on appeal are not development-friendly. So, the direction I had from commissioners, I'm sorry, for councilmembers, was we want people applying for a permit to get a permit, and if the permit's appealed, for it to be appealed by people who are interested and engaged in the provisions, then the appeal goes quickly based on the evidence that was presented before, and if somebody is unhappy, that there's somebody who is unhappy enough to file and participate. And so we don't have any knee-jerk reactions, but then have decision-makers considering new evidence that maybe the planner hadn't considered, or a hearing officer considering evidence, the hearing, the planning commission didn't consider. So, the language in Title sixteen as written did not seem to understand the distinction between a legislative role, like creating a comp plan, or changing a zoning district, and a quasi-judicial role, making a decision about an individual's property interest. And so now, a lot of these provisions were designed to make it so a developer could come into the city, or homeowner, or property owner, and know, what can I do? Am I gonna be allowed to do it? Am I gonna have to go to get a conditional use permit? How long is that going to take me? Can I get a permit to rent a short-term rental? You know, is that, once I get the permit and I'm continuing the use, we tried to eliminate the permits that expired in a year? So, building codes and building permits expire in a year. Land use permits continue with the use, right? So making that distinction and getting all of that cleaned up. So I'm going on a rampage, but this is, I basically, interested party is the start of it all, right? It all kind of flows. Making sure we have good due process, great access, good notice, but not allowing for unfettered interference with an individual's attempt to use the property.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Brown.
Commissioner Brown, so, clarify this for me. So, a person get a B and B, a short-term rental, permit is approved. I didn't, I'm a neighbor, I didn't complain when the process was going. This is completed, I have my, the person have a permit. The person, I now realize there's more traffic, there's more noise, there's more problems with this short-term rental. I cannot participate in a
Not if you didn't participate in the underlying action. You could, and all, and you could file a complaint, because it sounds like if there's more noise and more of these things, and it's having those problems, then they're likely not complying with something in our code, whether it's a nuisance, or it's, you know, but if they're, because what is happening before is you would have, first of all, you were providing notice for a short-term rental permit to the public at large, and then you, the individuals that wanted to challenge the short-term rental permit. Now, remember, there's very specific provisions that govern what, what you have to do to be a short-term rental in these specific districts. You know, so, and before, right now, we have even more, right? We have a lot of regulations, and so they would look at the district, see that they were permitted to be there, do the permit process, which was a lengthy process, then somebody would appeal. We have no limitation on who is an interested party. And I will say, this is actually a very generous definition of an interested party, because you're not saying if you live across town, you can't participate. You know, and a lot of communities will look at aggrieved status and look at, are you really harmed by this permit? And that's permitted under Alaska statute in land use provisions, and land use appeals for this reason, because you want people to have some certainty. But this definition doesn't do that, it just says you have to participate. What was happening now is their one-year permits, it takes about a year to appeal. So, you would have someone given a short-term rental permit, you would have that permit approved, and you would have an appeal. Under the current code, it would stay the permit, the appeal, and you might have eight months later the permit, the appeal was found in favor of the short-term rental permit holder. So, and then they have four months under that permit that they paid for, and has now been found to be valid. You know, and that is, you imagine the frustration and the incentive to actually get permitted when the risk of the permit, even if you have an unsuccessful appeal, an appeal that doesn't go anywhere. They would have, you know, they would, that, they would have since lost the value of that permit, right? You know, because they couldn't rent it out. So, we've done several things to fix that piece, but yes, that is, this definition definitely is more restrictive. It does require that, that level of participation. So, if you wanna participate in an appeal, you have to file a written position statement. So, okay, moving on. I revised the definition of lot to be as simple and broad as possible. And the front lot line was revised to reflect the debate between councilmembers regarding what constitutes the front yard. I don't know if anybody remembers that discussion, but I feel like we had this very healthy discussion about, you know, how that determination was made, do we give deference to the planner? Or do we deference to the landowner? So, given that the, and I think it was your Public Works Director really talked about addressing, and the implications of addressing, if I remember right. So anyway, I just changed it to just create a common sense approach. So, now, that definition, if you guys wanna look at that one, because we did give that one lots of time, is the property line or lines separating the lot from a street. For lots situated on the intersection of two or more streets, the lot has one primary front yard, which will be the address frontage, and should be subject to a full front yard setback as provided by this title. So, if it's where you have to put your address, that's gonna be the front yard.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I remember I was, I was one of, I think I was the one that brought this part up, and then we ended up going, talking about addresses. My comments, which I don't think are being put into this definition, looking at it here, now, the address is based on what's supposed to be the front of the lot. My concern was that I wanted the front lot to be off of the major road. So if you have two streets, one is the major through fair, and then one's kind of the off, the side street, that driveway and address should reflect the side street, not the main road. Because you don't want people, you don't wanna be dumping out more traffic onto the main road where you have generally faster traffic there. That was my concern, was I wanted to make sure that that is what the decision was made, is saying, when somebody comes to us and says, hey, I'm developing a lot, it's a corner lot, the planner's gonna go, okay, great, make sure that your driveway is on the non-major road here. And this still leaves it up that they have the ability to make a decision as to which road they wanna utilize.
Yeah, and we thought that the Public Works Director talked about addressing being something that's sort of established that, and we don't really have, we didn't.
Did he specify that?
But I'll double-check with him. I thought that he was saying
That's what I was shooting for.
You know, I, because I think, I think I understood that, and I think what Eric's comments were was, there's a whole, you know, you put the number in the borough, you know, creates this addressing, and then, you know, and so I made the definition reflect that, which I found was consistent with some other jurisdictions. I'm gonna ask, but I don't, I'm not comfortable putting Eric's, putting those words in Eric's mouth.
Sid, you can talk about that.
At least for, I can talk briefly. So, the addressing component, it's a little bit in Title sixteen, but the majority of it is under Title twelve, where it's hosted under Public Works, and a lot of it has to do with the driveway, and it has to deal also with the street classification of where the driveway goes. So I do think that maybe deferring just a little bit to Eric as far as that, even though we do the addressing, I agree with what you're saying about, and in fact, I've received quite a bit of comments back from one of our people in, on the staff, who's been here a number of years, saying, hey, did you know that this address is showing on Knit Goose Bay Road, but really it's accessed over here, and that really should be changed to reflect the more accurate of the side street, like what you're saying. But as far as the who determines, I, I would agree that we should defer to Public Works Director Shaw.
Okay, that's great, I mean, I'll ask him, but I think councilmember Crafton, we may find that that is actually what happens, and so by referring to the addressing frontage, all roads lead to green. You know, okay, so I'll talk to, then I'll talk to the Public Works, or Public Works. I'm not gonna get into the mobile home definition, except to say, I went to the statute, I didn't like it before. We were referencing a lot of, I think we were referencing a lot of statute, statutory provisions, and, and referencing back to federal law, and it was just too many US Code and statutory references. So, I just copied the language, so that we have the right language, and they actually can look at what their square footage is. So that's the only change there, is trying to create some clarity. But also, making sure we have the exact language that the state uses, so that we don't accidentally regulate it in a way that we shouldn't. So, there was comments regarding removal of multifamily, but I left it in because it's used repeatedly, and it remains both an independent definition and a definition for multifamily dwelling units, which are not necessarily, you know, family. Like, I, I don't think we want to just take the definition of family and imply that it's multifamily as we defined. I think we wanted to find it as its own thing. And I think that's what's anticipated in that language, both remaining in the code and what we've added. All right, this is a big one, so definition was revised, changed the date, I changed the definition, the distance for neighborhood to five hundred, I guess it's not that big of a one, but I, the reason why I did this is we are gonna talk about notice provisions regarding neighboring property owners, and it made sense to have those numbers line up, that was That was, um, and even if we take that one out, you know, I think, so that, that's, I mean, again, we can, does anybody have any thoughts on how we define a neighborhood? We don't use it that often. The only reason why it's an important definition is it shows up in our criteria for conditional use permits, things like that. You're considering the character of the neighborhood.
Madam Mayor.
Carol.
I thought we were going to keep that at twelve hundred.
That is the notice provision. So this is just the definition of what a neighborhood is. Yeah, so, but that's exactly, Councilman, our Commissioner DeYoung, that is, we're going to talk about that later. And actually, so this reflects what council said. The commission recommends you keep it at twelve hundred, so we'll talk about that later. We actually have, I think that, um, the planner has some maps to pull up and sort of kind of give you a feel. Um, I'm a little worried we're going to be here till ten o'clock at night, so I'm going to...
Okay.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I know you asked for questions earlier, then you didn't leave any time for it, but so I'm going to back up here to neighborhood, please.
Oh, okay.
Go back one slide. Uh, so here you're talking about a neighborhood definition, the distance for a neighborhood to be five hundred feet. The distance for a neighborhood, I think, needs to include, uh, what is platted in a subdivision. If you have a subdivision that is platted, that is a neighborhood. Uh, I know, I live in the Lakeview Estates condominium. Our, uh, plat is more than five hundred feet. So, uh, are some of the people that live in that neighborhood, uh, or live in that condominium complex, are they not part of the neighborhood under this? I, I, I think you have to look at what is platted. And if there is, uh, a plat, uh, you know, that says this is the, you know, Stugram subdivision addition one, then that entire plat needs to be included in the neighborhood.
I think that's an excellent idea. I think we can add language to neighborhood, um, that... Uh, actually, I think it fits. Because it says neighborhood means the physical area within a minimum of five hundred feet of the proposed use. This term also means an area having certain characteristics in common, including traffic flow, attendance at an elementary school, subdivision boundaries, or a short distance to frequently needed services. So, I apologize, I was more focused on the change to five hundred feet, but I think our definition does that. It makes sure that the subdivision is included.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Uh, sorry, on the neighborhood still, Holly. I, I feel like the, the, the footage is irrelevant. Basically, what Mr. Graham's saying is, it needs, a neighborhood should reference the plat. And that's re, and, and I mean, some of the old verbiage in here, I guess you could argue as well, could be used, like the attendance at a, um, an elementary school characteristics in common, like you said. But I think the plat is really the key point that we're referencing there. I mean, look at Mission Hills neighborhood, I think it's way more than five hundred feet there. And, and so it just need, I, I mean, is it multiple neighborhoods? I think plat is key.
Okay, no, I think that makes sense. I think the reason why you have a minimum of five hundred feet is because when you have criteria that requires you to consider the character of a neighborhood, and a person comes in and says, well, my subdivision has three lots and it's two hundred feet, and you've got somebody on the outside of that, or the, or there's a substantial change outside of that small subdivision, right? And they're saying, no, that's, we're part of the same neighborhood and the elementary school's here and the, you know, this is happening here and it, if it's, if you let it get too small, then the theory is that you're defining neighborhood too small and you're not being realistic about what you're defining. So that's, that's why you have a number a lot of times, which is, is not to create a max, but to create a minimum.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Johnson.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think plat works, except for the fact that if you live on a plat boundary, your neighborhood goes outside the plat. So, I think that you definitely need a feet, uh, definition as well.
And that is another really good example, if you're on the line or you're, you know, I mean, there's, you just want a, a specific smallest amount of area, I think. So, I mean, but let's, I mean, if, if council, you know, when we're going through this or the commission, if that's something we get pushed back on the ordinance, just based on, I don't see general consensus. So, you know, that's something we can change and that's something we can change on the floor. You know, we can change it during introduction. I'm going to circle it, just so we're paying attention. I am not going to go, unless anybody wants to bring up a specific definition, I am not going to go through the other definitions. Um, I'm going to move on to Division Two, because again, I know one of the most important things to council and the commission is to get this in place before building season, which means this time we can't really afford a second meeting. Um, I mean, if you want to have one, but that's a decision to make, based on the timeline that I've been given, you know, I'm not sure we can afford a second joint commission-council meeting and meet that timeline. So, um, the other thing is, as I pull together the final draft, that does not mean I'm out of touch. You know, you can go through the clerk consent and make sure I get notes, you know, on, on some of these things if I don't touch on them tonight. Does that work for everybody? Okay, so moving on to Division Two, this is our zoning districts on our zoning map. Uh, they are, so we have, I'm not going to go read them off to you, I think we're all pretty familiar with our districts. But for the most part, we have, um, we have residential districts and we have a commercial district and we have an industrial district. So we, the one thing that I notice most when I look at Wasilla's district map is your lack of mixed-use districts, right? That's, um, now we have a public zoning district. Uh, okay, chapter sixteen point five five is your downtown overlay district. I'm going to skip right over it, very little changes were made. There was some wordsmithing, um, uh, based on council member conduct, uh, comments per Councilmember Crafton, uh, at the August twenty-sixth meeting. The reference to the planner's determination was removed from the sentence that states when requirements in the title and the downtown overlay design standards conflict, the more restrictive requirement applies as determined by the planner. Now, it's just the most restrictive provision.
Ma'am, I, I was just trying to remember when, why we went over that and just kind of the way it came around. Because again, I'm, I'm of the type that I want this to be less restrictive. Are we just trying to reference that whenever it's the downtown overlay district, if you're in that area, because the downtown overlay district is more restrictive, that's what applies over everything else?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think we're just basically saying the more restrictive provision applies. Um, so maybe for some reason, there's a provision that is, applies in the downtown area that is a general provision, but is more restrictive because it was adopted later, you know, or something like that. I think that's a good rule, because if you've crafted ordinances and you, then they're on the books and they apply to that area, then you likely want them to apply to that area. What I would say to council and the commission is, if you want to reduce regulation, don't adopt laws that are more restrictive. You know, and if you want to adopt something that is less restrictive and you want it not to apply or something, we need to be careful and, and actually say that and apply it. So, so I think this was a good change that you recommended. I think removing discretion for the planner is a good thing. You know, uh, the more you remove discretion, the more people can apply this as it's stated. And they're not worried about how something will be interpreted by a single individual.
And so I'm, I'm just trying to remember why we had, like, what, what it, what this applied to. And if I'm recalling correctly, it was that the planner had the discretion that even in a downtown overlay area, or in an overlay district, we'll just say, they had the ability to basically say, hey, there's two provisions here, if we're not going to apply. Basically, the planner had the ability not to apply the overlay district in some cases, is I think what, what it was here. And so what you're saying is, what's the point of an overlay area if you're not going to actually enforce it? Which, I mean, look at our downtown overlay right now, so, I think that's where that was going, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
It's just the way you worded it was odd to me, because I was like, that doesn't sound like something I requested, so.
Yeah, it was really, you're just, I think your emphasis was on, why does this one person get to decide which one to apply? You know, because people are going to think that the one that apply, if I'm in the downtown overlay district, I'm going to think those provisions apply to me. And if so, a single person, not that your planner would do this at all, but if a planner did make a decision that I'm going to apply it to one and not the other, then you lack uniformity in the trust, right? So, um, but that said, the downtown overlay district is much more restrictive than, you know, and there were real goals and objectives in doing that, and the question is, were they met? Do you want that all for phase two? I'm sure that, that'll be a very, um, exciting discussion, I can't wait for it. I revised the language regarding demolition to allow for the plan for a replacement building or an explanation for why the building will not be replaced. This Title Sixteen rewrite did not include a revision of the downtown overlay district. I'm not going to go into that, we just, I think I've said that too many times. But, um, I did make the specific changes requested by council. Um, the pre-application process in subsection F for this section, which this section is sixteen fifty-five, O thirty-five, and we're on page sixteen of the PowerPoint for anyone trying to follow along, which just got harder because I skipped a bunch of slides. But, um, it was changed to require it's subject to consent by the planner to grant a waiver of the conference requested by the applicant. This was requested for consistency. And while I, again, I'm not very excited to make changes to the downtown overlay district, I thought this one was benign enough and created a, like, an easier, um, easier reference and there were even expectations. So I thought it was a good one to make. Um, and then in your PowerPoint, you can look at the specific language, how that change occurred. And that's like seventeen, and we're on to Division Four. Division Four is where we get our zoning district uses, density and dimensional requirements, signs, wireless communication facilities, reserved section, which will now be removed for separate consideration by the planning commission. Uh, water sewage and drainage systems, landscaping standards, non-conforming lots, building uses. So, uh, council pointed out that mobile home park was not, um, was not in the district use chart. And I would, I should say, this, some of these district use chart notes came from both the commission and council. There were a lot of, um, topics that were, you know, shared by both. So, I revised the chart, um, to make sure that that was done, made sure that we had, I, I just basically added mobile home park to the mobile home definition, both in the chart and anywhere, you know, in Title Sixteen. I revised the chart and other provisions to refer to wireless communication facilities. That change I will keep. Um, but the definition and reference will be made without reference to this chapter sixteen point seven-two. It'll just, we'll just call out the facilities, making sure ham radios and towers below a certain footage, which I believe is around thirty-five or so, but that's set by the, um, by federal law, so. Um, home occupations were permitted in the industrial district. This was a comment by Councilmember Cottle to, oh, to remove that restriction. Um, I increased the sign size from two square feet to four square feet. Um, I checked, and this was once more something we had in common with Palmer's. We made that size increase, so that creates consistency, um, for, you know, what consistency is worth. Uh, I also changed that for short-term rentals, but it seemed odd to have a restriction for them that didn't apply. You know, that would apply differently than home occupation. I think that's going to get confusing, um, so I kept it the same. Um, and we added a provision that allows for greater percentage of floor area to be used if approved by conditional use permit. So where we removed discretion for the planner throughout this code, we increased discretion for the planning commission. You know, we increased discretion to go to the planning commission and ask for permission. That creates a lot of, um, flexibility for developers, for property owners. They can go ask these questions and the planning commission has criteria under a conditional use permit process that they can apply. Hopefully, a lot of things like this, where someone's coming in with a sort of very specific question or change, go fast. And we will work with the planning commission to make sure they know how to walk through those types of almost abbreviated conditional use permit considerations, where you're not looking at the development of an entire parcel. Um, so this is, while I'm talking right now, I'm on flex, uh, slide nineteen, sixteen sixty twenty, home occupation as an accessory use. I don't know why, I, I messed up my PowerPoint, the titles are flying in after the text. Oops. Um, so farm animals, sixteen sixty forty-five, this is on page twenty. I thought, and this one was hard to depict, so you will please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought council wanted to increase farm animals from one to two to address concerns regarding herd animals. I think you had some, uh, public comments regarding that animals like horses are herd animals and having one was actually, um, not conducive to having the animals, you know, to, or to the animal's health or the, the use of, you know, I would say farming, but I, you know, I use that term lightly. Uh, so, we can reduce that back to one, because I could not tell. So this is one, does anybody care if you go up to two? Well, I think you probably have a couple very happy members of the public. I feel like that was, there was definitely comments on that. It's okay, no, what did you say? I just said, I can't believe there was never two to begin with, like, who wrote this, that you could only have one? See, it's a real thing, this herd animal thing. And who wants to ride just one horse or whatever, that's ridiculous. I know, I think the comments were, they were not very happy, you know, you're supposed to have them together or something, anyway. Um, so I'm saying, the herds are safe in Wasilla tonight, right? So, um...
Yes.
Uh, subsection D in sixteen sixty forty-five was changed to incorporate recommendations by the Central Matsu Fire Department Fire Marshal, including requiring entrances to be posted at the end of the driveway and on the building, before, I think we just had them on the building. Um, and, oh, you know what, I got to hit it again, because, there we go. Sixteen sixty eighty, we're in the short-term rentals, uh, provision, and this is on page twenty. So, um, the sign was increased to mirror home occupations as we discussed. The Fire Marshal also recommended that we remove terms like smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Oh, wait, to, uh, and, um, make sure they had alarms, which I just thought was really helpful and demonstrates why we have people with actual knowledge about what we're regulating way in. It's a small change, but knowing something, you know, that their smoke is different than having an alarm tell you to get out of the building, right? So I thought that was really helpful, um, as was the addressing information. Um, there was also changes to, uh, titles and how we refer to them. We will go through and make sure that none of those were missed, again, all of those were very helpful comments. The Fire Marshal also made comments asking, really asking questions about consistency between borough, uh, code provisions and provisions in some of the, um, international building code and why we would deviate or if they were the same. So, a lot of our definitions are the same as the borough when they have them. A few are not, that's purposeful. The boroughs, um, uh, update and the scope of their regulation are different. Um, and their update of their codes is behind, at, at least, you know, from this moment in time, as we, so we, we didn't do that. Our provisions are designed for land use and they're specific to what we're trying to regulate and how we're trying to regulate it. Um, so that is one of the reasons for some of the difference. The other reason why we have a difference is, we are not regulating building. Um, I do, like, one of the things that council may see in the near future is regulation of removal of dangerous buildings, for example, which has a building code component. But aside from that, I, the city is not really in the business of regulating building, uh, building codes. If that changes, then that's a discussion and that's a different chapter. I also think there's confusion that comes up because of the nature of how the city crafted its permitting language in the past. It wasn't that clear that they weren't in the business of regulating buildings, so, or the building of buildings, so. Uh, the planning commission raised questions regarding the definition of short-term rental and whether or not the city wanted to include employee housing in the definition. Currently, employee housing and bunk houses are excluded from the definition. So that is actually a question I am openly posing to all of you today. So, we have excluded it. It is not considered a short-term rental if there's employee housing or bunk houses. So I, the way that, you know, and I think that's, okay, something to think about. I'm going to move on unless I hear anything, I mean, I'm in the... I mean, when the planning commission raised this issue, it seemed more of an open question. Like, are we thinking about this? Councilmember Brown, or Commissioner Brown, I think he brought it.
Madam.
With the chair.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, Holly, it's kind of the same kind of thing. And with the construction that we're going to have coming here into the valley in the next few years, those short-term rental spaces that we have available are going to be needed for employee housing and bunk house housing for the people that are going to be working here. So I think it's very important that those two kind of be blended together somehow so that our employers and our contractors will have the ability to use those specific permits that we have available for the housing of employees and labor.
Because as it's worded right now, they don't have to. They don't have to get a permit. So they can, they are excluded from the definition. So if you have a bunk house or housing for employees, that's going to be excluded. Now, if an, if you, that said, so, and that's a very interesting question. We need to make sure we read the short-term rental, and it makes sense. Because I think here, if I'm an employer and I am providing a bunk house or employee housing, then it's going to be excluded from the definition of a short-term rental. If I'm a short-term rental owner and I, it's open to everybody, and it's not for my employees, I have to get a permit to be a short-term rental owner, and I have to have all of those things in place.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Brown.
Isn't the concern for short-term housing, one of the big concerns is the safety. Other people rent those houses. That's why we require inspection, smoke detector, and other things there. Don't the people who are employed by me deserve the same protection? And right now, there's no requirement for me to even be concerned about that if I run it as an employee bunk house.
Well, I think, and we will double-check this to make sure, but I actually think if you're running a bunk house for your employees, you have a lot more restrictions and oversight because you have to deal with OSHA. Potentially, you have to deal with, right? We have a lot of things that might apply to a bunk house that are not going to apply otherwise. I mean, even during COVID, I remember, you know, dealing with a lot of companies that had employee housing and the restrictions and the regulations, both in the COVID arena but outside of it, were more significant. We see those in mining operations, things like that. So, but I, but I say that, and I don't want to talk about, I'm going to check, I'm going to verify the words that are coming out of my mouth.
You're correct. There are some OSHA rules for that. But I travel across Alaska, and there's a lot of bunk houses. Doesn't meet the standard, doesn't meet the standard.
Well, and I think that's, that is a good point.
There's nobody to investigate where, if we put it in this reg, at least if it's inside the city, we can have some oversight on it.
So then that's the main question, right? Do you want to have additional oversight? Because I think the original attempt, at least in this round, was not to increase but to decrease. But I, but I also think, so unless I hear something from other members, I'm not going to put it in. However, I do think that is a Phase Two flag. Like, I think it's something to flag because I don't think Phase Two is necessarily designed to limit regulations based on my marching orders. That's what this is. But on Phase Two, it's to change them. So I think that's a really appropriate time to talk about these. I mean, this is an appropriate time to talk about it. I just don't, I'm not sure you're going to sway the body. So council discussed problems when grandfathered improvements are destroyed and can't be rebuilt, given the waterfront setbacks. This was really Councilmember Cottle. And her emphasis was really not on allowing the perpetuation of non-conforming uses, but allowing relief when, for some reason, property is destroyed, and there really is no other way to develop it and put it back into place in the foot, in a footprint that would comply with current code. So it was a very restrictive, narrow attempt to make sure you could rebuild your house, you know, if it got destroyed, even if you couldn't meet those setback requirements.
Madam Mayor. Sorry, Holly. I was, I was making sure before we moved on from setbacks. I had a question. I'm on page 88 of 182, if that helps you. Under Section D, number one, it's referencing subdivisions recorded with platnotes or recorded conditions, covenants, and restrictions prior to 1986 are exceptions. What was the idea behind having an exception to CCRs that are recorded prior to 1986 and giving them an exception?
Yeah, this is one we talked about before, and I really hate this answer. It's not a good answer. The answer is, I could not find out why that was there, and I was unwilling at this stage to remove it until I understood what I was taking out. Because that, this is a very specific provision. So I thought that it had something to do with the way that the CCRs and the platnotes were recorded prior to 1986 that somehow created an inequity if we didn't have an exception. So, I don't know. So that's why I was like, we're not changing this. Someone put this in for a very specific reason. We can change it. But I, if you want to change it, if you're like, no, we want it out because it's referencing, then I think my inclination is to research it more, and then we can decide if we're going to take it out. But I did try to figure out, you know, what to do with it. But I, I even pulled, I think I pulled platnotes and subdivisions recorded before 1986. And basically, I mean, part of me is like, whatever was happening with the way they were recorded seemed to justify for the draft, for the author, the reduction of the requirements back to those recorded platnotes. And I wondered if it had something to do with what recording looked, options looked like back then for changes. I mean, I don't, maybe, what do you think, Councilmember?
My, my only understanding is, when it comes to CCRs that are that old, is that they allowed for smaller setbacks. Like, that's, that's what my, I mean, I'm taking a stab at it a little bit. Is maybe they, they said, hey, the setbacks, you know, less than what we have it set as now. And so they were saying, hey, if you're recorded prior to this date, we're going to continue to honor the fact that you have that. And obviously, if we didn't have this provision in here, then once we pass this, essentially, those are what we consider legal non-conforming, I think, at that point, is what those would be considered. I mean, my idea behind it at this point is, most of the CCRs that are recorded as of those dates have probably expired at this point and actually don't even really hold any weight anymore. I would like, I would almost like to see it removed and just say, hey, these properties are legal non-conforming. But the idea behind it and part of what we're trying to do with this code is to essentially break, like, make, make some changes to the city here. And we're saying, hey, after some point, you know, we're going to want you to comply with what we have. We don't want you to continuously have the ability to always do what, what there was there, and we want, we want you to bring, bring you forward into compliance. Like, the example was, we're gearing away from allowing single-family in commercial districts, for instance, that type of same concept, if that makes sense. Unless you can find some justifiable reason why it's there, I can't comprehend why it's there at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I just, that was all I could think of, was that prior, before 1986, they were, they were recording things and evidence and restrictions, you know, in platnotes. They just wanted to respect the setbacks reflected in those recorded documents. But then the question is, why prior to 1986? I mean, if you're going to, you know, I mean.
To be all of them at that point.
Why not all of them, right? So then I was like, well, it says 1986, and until I can figure out what happened in 1986. So you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to figure out what happened in 1986. That's right. I'm doing it. And you will know. And I hope Councilmember Crafton that you will ask me what happened in 1986 at our next meeting because I'm pretty proud of myself.
I'm going to leave my sticky note here just for the sake of coming back to it when we get back around to it. I have another question if I could follow up, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I haven't left the page. I'm just going down to number two, right there below it. So specifically, it says incidental architectural features such as windowsills, cornices, and eaves may not project more than three feet into any required setback. So I'm just going to walk, walk you through what my thought process here is. We were in Juneau recently. I'm walking down the downtown area, and they have the beautiful sidewalks with their shops that have the nice little eaves that cover the sidewalks. You're not walking in the rain all the time. Do those apply to this right here? Do those fall into this category, or are we not allowed to have our shop owners do that type of thing?
Yeah, I mean, they can't project more than three.
So the answer would be yes, they're not allowed.
Right. Well, no, more than three feet. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to visualize three feet. So I think this one, if you guys don't want to have that exception, I mean, we can take it out. But I, these are the exceptions that I think we really need to check with Public Works Planning.
I just had a thought. I was trying to understand if those were allowed or not. But from what you're telling me is no, those technically would not be allowed unless they did not go more than three feet in there, which, again, just trying to think about it without pulling out a ruler or measuring tape, they definitely did project more than three feet. Thank you.
That's Juneau, no more. So I'm just going to, and these types of questions, I mean, one of the things the staff really has made an effort to get through on a more micro level, even, I mean, the Public Works Director and the Planner and the Deputy Administrator have been neck-deep in this stuff for over a year. But I, but I also think they've brought in, and, you know, we've had comments by several directors. But I think one of the things we can do, and I'll turn to the Planner to just help me remember to do this, is just get that confirmation that these substantive issues got revealed. Okay, well, you can talk about it now. Let's just finish. The one thing I will say is that simple changes, changing references to uniform, you know, building codes of the International Building Code, which makes complete sense. And then we're on to parking. And we're going to take a break from parking. And the Planner's going to come and share some staff's recommendations or thoughts on home occupation. Are these, are these explanations or further changes or?
Cindy, state your name for the record.
This is Cindy Wellman, City Planner. So these are some of the notes. We met with Maureen Graham and then Director Shaw, and as well as Deputy Director Walden, and just went a really fine tooth just to double-check everything. And there were just some comments that came out of it. So this one is specifically for the home occupations that I believe that she had provided those. Do you think it would be okay just to touch on them, or do you think it's too much of a?
No, I think so, and I don't want to overstate. You tell me if I'm right. So one of the things that, when we looked at home occupation, one of the things the staff was looking at is a lot of policy-based considerations. Like, what do we want to allow in home occupations, right? Do we want to allow automotive sales? And so, and looking at how those are defined and the scope. And so I think that is the, what the Planner is bringing to use in a discussion over what do we allow as a home occupation? When, if you think about it, this is an important discussion because it's a discussion about what's sort of allowed in your residential districts, right? So I think, does that, so, yes, I would say, yes, take a few minutes. And like, I think this is really important.
And if we end up just flagging them, like, maybe just read through, and then people can consider them too, and bring additional changes to that work. So they're, they're pretty brief, actually. We really, really narrowed it down. So just to give you a heads up where we are, so on the packet, if you go to page 85 of 203, but if you're actually looking at the document, it's page 71 of 182.
Cindy, can you?
Absolutely. And actually, I'm going to go back up to page, just one moment. So it's in our packets. We're going to go page 84 of 203. And the actual document itself is page 7 of 182.
Accessory uses?
Yes. And actually, right before that, I want to take a look real quick at unlisted uses really quickly here. Just need to back up because I thought there was one little comment on that one. I'm backing up on my slow little. Okay, so I think I'm going to come back to the, I was looking at 1660-010, unlisted uses. But I think after I talk about home occupations, maybe I'll come back to the unlisted because this will capture a lot of that. So we'll go two.
Do y'all want to take a recess for about five minutes?
Can you get some more information?
Yes.
It is 8:06. We will be back at 8:12.
Thanks for coming.
That's what I, does that make some of my questions? So on short-term rentals, I just had to laugh, tell, why does it seem like it'd be an additional insurance and moving out? And then someone doesn't get it.
I think they don't know what. Which one is it? Oh, yes.
Exactly. But they moved.
Yeah.
They were about to move. Other than that, it was later.
Okay. I know, it's getting pretty dry in here. We're back on the record at eight sixteen. As good as the crowd you want. Okay, Cindy, talk fast.
Okay.
I got so many questions now.
So I have to be real careful here because I'm looking at a document that has a different set of page numbers, so I need to be careful.
She's busy right now, so you need to. I'm good at throwing. There's my.
Will you warn me first?
Yeah, I will. I will.
She does not, that's a lie. Okay, so we're gonna try one more time with the page numbers here. So just, this is Cindy Wellman, City Planner, and this is going to be in our packet, page eighty-five, two oh three, or page seventy-one of one eighty-two of the actual new draft. So what I'm talking about is sixteen sixty oh two oh, Home Occupation as an Accessory Use. When you go down to prohibited uses, the first comment had to do with the item number two, Motor Vehicle Services. And the question that came up, motor vehicle services, the term is not defined, does this mean no home auto shops? Or that would be permitted if under an AP permit, for example, under the use chart, commercial, under ten thousand square feet? So we discussed it, the term not defined, so does this mean all motor vehicle services, even one at a time? Flippers will buy and sell on Craigslist, et cetera. This is somewhat restrictive and is that what you would like? And, or would you prefer to have something in place that would allow maybe a certain number, maybe two or something, three, something along those lines, or not to exceed?
Madam Mayor, sorry, just a comment.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought we had automotive sales defined somewhere, and I wanna say it was two, two or more, or three or more is whenever it became classified.
So this would be motor vehicle services, do you not want any working on the vehicle out of the home at all? No, one at a time? Because as defined elsewhere, as you go through the criteria, it says, for example, must be by appointment only, and there's a whole laundry list of things that as long as you meet these criteria, then it would be okay. And then number three was automotive sales right under that.
Yeah, and this, just to be clear, the automotive sales is intended to be very broad. I mean, that's where we sort of created these exceptions or these prohibitions by looking at other communities, including Soldana, the other comparable communities. The, so it is totally fine to make this more narrow, but this is a pretty broad restriction. The reason, I think, why a lot of communities have it is because automotive services in a residential area, on a residential lot, involve things like contamination and dealing with products such as gasoline and oil and all of those things. I think that's one of the reasons why it shows up a lot. And there's a lot of different things that could happen. You could build a car, you can fix a car, you can repair a car. You can provide, you can put in a radio system and maybe you wanna be able to put in the radio system, you can put lights in or a lift system, you know, right? There's a lot that you could do, you can paint it. So all of that is included by simply saying motor vehicle services, that gives the city the ability to do that. But we can spell it out, we can be restrictive, we can say no more than one car at a time, you know, so. And if nobody has anything to weigh in right now, I think it's just maybe flag it as you move into the ordinance and then you can consider. Does the staff have a recommendation, what they wanna see?
Well, one of the things that we added, so the combination of the two, because if you were just looking, like, I'm in automotive sales, oh, that's not allowed. Or it may be being more clear to say this and actually put a number in. So for a person reading to know by definition, they can sell less than three cars at one time, suggested adding under three or reference to the definition of the term in the chapter.
So if you guys want to do that, so again, this right here is saying home occupations are not including motor vehicle services or automotive sales. So if you want those to be able to include some, you know, and so these are commercial enterprises, a sub-business. So for example, if you put your car for sale on Facebook Marketplace, that's not, you're not running a business. That's not, you're not using your home for an occupation profession or other business activity, you're just selling a car as an individual. So, I mean, they could do that. Arguably, they probably could do that one at a time until that sort of intent rises to the level of a business that requires a business license. But absolutely, we could go, you could do anything you want, you can limit this, and in the interest of less regulation, you could allow it and put a certain number of cars in, or automotive sales. You know, you could have somebody, I think that one of the things the, I think Maureen was talking about was, you know, you, so you flip a car, is that what you said, Cindy? Like flip a car, like you get a car, maybe you fix it up, you repair it and you sell it. Is it okay to do one or two of those at your home or do you not want that?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. The motor vehicle service I'm thinking of is car detailing. So we kinda mentioned, I mean, I, do you want, do I want somebody with five, six cars waiting to be detailed? Not necessarily in my neighborhood. But I know some high-level, people that do some high-level detailing where it's appointment only, they only ever have one or maybe two cars at the house. You know, you have to drop it off, they pull it into their garage and they detail their car in there and then you come pick it up. So I mean, I, in the essence of not having less regulation, I don't wanna have to spell all of this out. But also at the same time, I don't necessarily want to be so restrictive that people can't do whatever. Do some home occupation type stuff. You know, we live in a world, I think, today where people have what we refer to as a side hustle, you know, and they're doing something on the side, car flipping, detailing vehicles, but at the same time, I understand, just in the essence of talking of vehicles, we start doing oil changes and stuff and you have that one careless person that, you know, is dumping oil where they shouldn't be. Where it starts dirtying up the lot for whatever reason, you know. To me, I'm seeing both sides to where, hey, let's allow it, but also at the same time, why we don't want to allow it as well, because it can get out of hand very easily.
Well, I could add for council's consideration at the next ordinance, language that says for more than one at the same time, for more than three.
Michael.
Is this?
Press the button.
Press the button.
Sorry. I don't, for some reason, I don't, I don't really know what happened there. Okay. Okay, so for C four regarding, or let's just go through them. For C two, I could add for more than three vehicles on the property at the same time, that's motor vehicle services. And again, we can change the numbers, but to automotive sales, I could say for more than two vehicles on the property at the same time. And I'm made up these numbers. For four, regarding boats, I could say for more than one boat at the same time or something. Does, I mean, we could put those numbers in, we could make them all the same. And make them two vehicles, two boats, you know, we can make them one. But if it's a home occupation, you may even wanna start with one, see what that looks like, expand for phase two. I don't, did the staff have a number that they plugged in, that they wanted to see plugged in?
Well, we deferred a little bit because it did go back like what Councilmember Crafton was saying, because it defines automotive sales in the definition. Do you still have that open by chance? I believe it's three or more.
Yes, three or more.
Right.
Oh, that is right, yeah.
And so, you know, on one hand it said yes and then no, so, but then you also look, you know, if you were in maybe a smaller neighborhood where you have three vehicles for sale. So that's just an option.
Through the chair, Holly, is the question to the bodies whether or not, bottom line question is, do they wanna prohibit motor vehicle sales?
And services.
Well, start with number two, as a home occupation. Is that the question?
Yes, do we wanna work through, so motor vehicle sales or motor vehicle services, do you wanna prohibit them or do you wanna allow them for? And if so, for how many, and do you want me to just pick a number, so maybe three and put three throughout and then you can consider it with the ordinance?
When your neighborhood, think about your neighborhood, motor vehicle services.
Madam Mayor.
Two?
Commissioner Brown.
Yep. My concern is, if I have a two-acre lot, having three, because for sale's not a problem, if I live in a condo, I'm still a citizen and I'm still have a right to have three autos for sale, where do I park them?
So is there a way to have levels of? Condo wouldn't count though, because it's a zoning thing.
Yeah.
So it only, it's only, sorry, sorry, it, home occupations aren't, wouldn't be allowed in what we'd consider a condo. One, we don't really have the designation. I know, I get what you're saying.
But if I have a small lot.
Yeah.
I could be on the neighbor's property with three extra vehicles.
Madam Mayor. So my concern isn't so much for automotive sales as it is for automotive service, services. I think, you know, given the small size of the city and what we're trying to do is to, you know, ensure the, you know, quality of life and appearance of the city, I think when you're talking about automotive services or servicing boats or motors or whatever it is, I think that needs to happen inside. You know, I mean, you don't want your next-door neighbor, you know, pulling engine box all the time and having a truck sitting out there for three months that he's working on, waiting on parts, things like that. I think if we're gonna do this, you know, home occupation side hustle sort of thing, it needs to be inside, it needs to be out of sight, it needs to be in an enclosed.
Garage.
Area, you know, so, be it a garage, be it a shed, whatever you wanna call it, but I don't think you want it right there on the street.
Well, and one thing to note too, I mean, this just adds to the discussion point. So when we're looking at home occupation, so the, there are limitations. They, I mean, in order to not get in, need an administrative permit, they have to meet some specific requirements. I don't know if that's helpful, you know, I mean, I bet we look at what those requirements are. But I guess I'm hearing, I feel like this might be one for, should we, what if we add for more than one vehicle? Or do we want to just require them to get permitting and then be a licensed business in a licensed area? I don't know. So I feel like this one is, given in the interest of time, I don't hear a clear answer. So how about I, when we draft the ordinance, we flag it for reconsideration and I'll add comments and notes, how does that sound? And then Cindy, if you could make sure that anybody who feels strongly one way or the other or has any information they wanna share when we do have this ordinance, make sure that they have had an opportunity to provide that, like we, we think you should allow X amount or no amount.
So that kind of dovetails into a bigger question and you said it just perfectly. You said, so we're looking at prohibited uses, like otherwise they're allowed, without an administrative permit. But then what type of permit would that be?
So it depends on what district, I mean, it depends on what the business is. So if I am, if I am. So it depends on what district, I mean, it depends on what the business is, so if I am, if I have a business and I detail cars, then I'm going to get a business license for detailing cars and I'm going to come based on the district that I am in. Um, and we'll be able to see what I'm allowed to do and where I'm allowed to do it, and they just wouldn't be able to do it as part of their home unless, you know, they, are they, you know, it doesn't mean that you can't have a business in certain areas, it's just not an accessory use.
And we, we might need to, um, define a couple of those uses, because I don't think there is a type of use for specific things in the use chart. It would just be commercial under ten thousand.
Yes.
Marlene, do you have a question?
Sorry.
Yes, Madam Mayor. My question is, this is, this is under home occupation, so is this motor vehicle services by a private individual or a licensed business?
It, it is a profession and an occupation, so it is a licensed business, it, it, even though they're in a home occupation, they're still a business, so they're going to need to follow those procedures. And I think one of the things the planner brought up, which is really important, is looking at the uses that we choose to regulate. We made sure that they were consistent in some of these ways, but right now, but we didn't expand regulation, right? This, this process was not designed to expand regulation, and so council looked at things that are already there, like bees. What are we, what are we doing with bees, where are we allowing them, there was a little bit of discussions, but so, if it's not here, so for example, we know in automotive sales that a rural residential, you can get, uh, you can have an automotive sales, um, business or use with a conditional use permit. So, that means that even if you are doing that on a property that is, you know, that is residential, I think there's a process that you have a conditional use permit, you're saying this is my use and it's just not a home occupation. It's your business, and so it'll go through, that use will be subject to the conditional use permit process. The, um, uh, but what we don't have is, let's see if I can try to follow my pages.
And it actually, excuse me for one moment, there's a few of them that this touches on, and it was what I was going to bring up anyway, but a few of these more, I'd like to say almost heavier uses that, and that this would qualify under, uh, maybe one of the ideas was to have them maybe called out specifically, similar to what, you know, this one is automotive sales, you know, maybe you do automotive sales two or under, that could be, then you would list it. Or one of the ones I was going to get to was, um, commercial kitchen under the cottage industry.
All, yeah. And these are all, so this is phase two, this is quintessential phase two, right? So when we went through our, because there's a lot of things, like when you look at your use chart, you're deciding what you're actually calling out and why you call out exotic animals and, uh, fire range, outdoor firing range and not automotive sales, I don't know. You know, and, and I don't think the staff necessarily knows either, it's one thing that I, that they are grappling with is what, why do we choose to call out what we choose to call out? Your catch-all is your commercial use over and under ten thousand. Is that appropriate, is that what you want, is that the size you want? All of these are questions that you should ask after your comprehensive plan is prepared, and you know what districts you're dealing with, because if you have a mixed-use district, that's going to really influence what you're choosing to put in your chart potentially, you know, and if you don't. So, I think these are just really, tho- those types of questions, Cindy, I think are really important, what you want to see in the chart, but I don't think, if we're going to delve into that, I know, I know, like you've been looking at a lot of this stuff, we probably have a lot more questions. We probably have, you know, there's probably a month of uses that we could really discuss and whether or not we should put them in or not put them in.
We narrowed it down, we, we actually narrowed it down to about three or four, and so we're, we're really good in it. It, and it was good having public works in the room, because that was our deciding, one of our deciding factors. In addition to all the, the big things like the, you know, the, the sound, the glare, the visual aspect of it, that was quickly, oh, we shouldn't look at that. But from a, uh, public work standpoint, the heavier use, like would it be using more of a septic type thing? Or would it be using more water, or would it be bringing a lot more traffic to the area? We were able to exclude the good majority of these for home occupations. So we just had a couple that, like, one of the other ones was, uh, dog groomer. So it, it's like a nice home occupation, you use thirty percent of the home, the person, it comes by appointment only, but yet our public works department said, whoa, hold on a second, that's a lot of water usage, that is a lot of hair, that's a lot of things that we would be looking at more closely, so yes, they, those are.
So, just to be clear, you're not talking about changing the use chart, you're just, you have two or three that you want to put in the prohibition list, I think that is great, I think, so I think
Or allowed.
Adding and defining the prohibition list for home occupation, I think this is the phase. Changing the uses permitted in the varying districts and adding that to the district use chart and the specific use criteria that will need to be drafted or should be drafted potentially, that I think is a good, it needs its own attention, it's too important, I think, to put it in at this phase of Title sixteen, that would be my recommendation. So, I mean, if you can run through the
Yep.
provisions, I'll just add them, and then if council wants to keep them, then you can keep them, and if you want to make motions to remove them, same thing for the commission, we can talk about them as we go through.
Just as an overview, um, council member Crafton brought this up at the last council meeting and he was asking about, you know, whether we know the, uh, businesses who are coming into the city. And so what happens is, what's supposed to happen at least, is somebody comes and gets a business license. They go to our MuniRev site, they fill out the business license portion, and it gets to a part where it, it literally, you know, a hard screech in which all of a sudden it says you must contact planning. So that's where I get involved and we look at the use, that's how it is going right now. So, these items here, um, it would just be, um, commercial kitchens, it's like a cottage food-type industry. Um, that wouldn't necessarily, you're not having a lot of traffic coming there, but maybe it would require some additional water, maybe not a lot, but, you know, it would allow somebody to be able to do that, that type of home occupation, um, septic as well. And, let's see here, pet. Pet grooming, and then the odd, the two automotive and the vehicle sales and the boat, I think we got all of those. And then, um, well, there's one part later, but it has to do with the, the amount of home occupations that you can have as well, because it's limit, limits it to one right now, but you could have potentially two spouses that have a very limited use.
And essentially, it's just limited to one without a conditional use permit, right? So it's only one hog has home occupation's permit per lot, yeah, without obtaining. So do, it does, do you want me to add those, commercial kitchen, uh, dog groomer? And so let me just quickly run through what is, what the, so the, generally in order to get a home occupation, you would need a permit, um, so, but you can get, you can, um, have a home occupation without a permit in RR, R1, R2, RM, uh, industrial and commercial zoning districts if you meet the following criteria, this is important, because council member Graham, you talked about, like, nobody should be able to see that, right? If that, if you're, if you're detailing a car, thinking about what that does, the provisions, either you're going for a permit that's going to get a criteria analysis, or you're, uh, you have to keep it under wraps in essence. So it's no more than one person, in addition to members of the household that reside on the premises, may engage in the occupation, no more than one nameplate or wall sign, uh, the use of the dwelling unit or detached appurts for the home occupation is, has to be clearly incidental and subordinate to its use for residential purposes by its occupants, not more than thirty percent of the combined floor area or the dwelling and impertinence is used in the conduct of the home occupation, unless the commission approves a conditional use permit allowing the use of a greater percentage of the floor area. There's no significant change in the outside appearance of the building or premises or other visible evidence of the conduct of such home occupation other than one sign that completes, complies with the section. Sales and services are scheduled appointment only, so then no more than one patron vehicle, oh, actually, this sort of answers that, but, um, one patron vehicles on the premises at a time and traffic is not generated by the home occupation in greater volumes that would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. So I didn't think about the implications of this on auto sales, but if we, if you are allow, if you remove the prohibition to auto sales, they're still going to be limited to one at a time. Um, but I can clarify that in subsection five. Uh, six, equipment or process is not used in the home occupation which creates noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference detectable to the normal senses of the lot if the occupation is conducted in a single-family residence or outside the dwelling unit if conducted in other than a single-family residence. In the case of electrical interference, no equipment or process shall be used which creates visual or audible interference in any radio or television receivers off the premises, causes fluctuations in line voltage off the premises. Only one home occupation is permitted per lot without obtaining a conditional use permit. No exterior operations including display of merchandise and storage of goods, materials, or equipment. So it's still very restrictive if you're going to be doing this, uh, if you're using home occupation. It just means if they can fall within this, they no longer have to come to, they no longer have to get a permit. They can just run their business with a business license.
They have to comply.
They have to comply with all of this, and it certainly can be enforced.
Old compliance.
Yes.
Then enforce it, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, I'm going to use some examples here, so like we're talking, I, I was, I mentioned the auto detailing. If we allowed auto detailing, uh, where was it? Number four, kind of goes to what Mr. Graham was saying, where they would have to be in some, inside somewhere essentially. I mean, I guess you could argue, you know, the average person washes their vehicle outside, that's okay, but if you're obviously detailing a vehicle every single day, that's where it's not, no longer in, in a normal use, and it would obviously apply here, is what I'm understanding, and then same with the number five. It's by, that, it's a, it's a service, so it would be appointment only, and then no more than essentially one vehicle uh, waiting on the property, so, I mean, I, I would be okay with that, the only other thing I want to add, what about, maybe I, we mentioned, I didn't hear, because we mentioned dog grooming, what about salons?
Same.
Same, I, I, yeah, I, that one happens as well, falls under the same category, that could work out.
Like actual salons?
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
And there's a lot of in-home salons.
I, that's where I go, my.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't know if we were talking about dog salons or something.
Sorry.
I was just like, when you were talking about salons, are we writing, because one of the things I, I, I know salons actually do have a lot of regulations, when, I, I think they're subject to a lot of regulations, so, um, when we're talking about in-home salons, I don't know, I mean, that's obviously something we want to talk to public works about.
Yes, and that was one of, this is, um, city planner Wellman, that's another one of the ones that was ranked, I mean, it was the same as the, the groomers, where you could have another person who works outside the home, who then works with you, you could have potentially two people, um, working there, you know, one person at a time by appointment, that's, you know, just a lot of water usage and a lot of hair that, but it still allows for the person to be able to have that home occupation in their home and not have to go and get a, a, you know, commercial building here in the city.
But remember, they're only allowed to have one person there at a time, so how much water can one person's head use? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes, Mayor.
I can answer that question for you. Okay, in all the years, twelve years, I was over on Main Street, my water bill went over the, uh, five thousand gallon one time. It don't take that much water. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. So, I'm, I'm listening here to this conversation, and I'm hearing, define this regulation, define this other new regulation, define this, or are we trying to rewrite Title sixteen?
No.
I mean, are, are we just trying to add more regulations here? That's my question, that's for everybody here in the council.
Yeah, and I, I, so I guess I would say this, at this stage with Title sixteen, one approach we could take, because again, this is a hundred, over a hundred and fifty pages document that we're working on, I think gathering the information, the information administration is providing you is golden, like that is very important, but some of that can be crystallized for phase two. I think the big question that, and I think one of the most important things they asked is not so much what else to add, unless, you know, unless administration comes and says we absolutely have to prohibit X, because that is going to, so I would, we'll make sure, Cindy, we can make sure we pose that to your team, right? Like, um, tell us what you want prohibited, if, if the administration is going to come and say, we want commercial kitchens prohibited in home occupation, they can meet all of those requirements, which is kind of what I heard. Um, so let's make sure we gather that information, but otherwise, let's focus on what, on deregulation rather than adding regulation at this stage. Does that sound fair? Okay, so I would say, motor vehicle services, there seems to be, uh, disagreement on whether or not you want to wholly prohibit that as a home occupation. Do you want me to remove motor vehicle services or limit it to a number of cars for consideration in the ordinance? So, how about this, I'm going to limit it to no more than two vehicles on the property at the same time. Um, now again, given that you have to do it by appointment and you only have one person at a time, I kind of feel like the language sort of limits it to one, um, so, at a time.
I, I see the reason for two, so if you have, you say, hey, you're going to be here at three, the next appointment's at three-thirty, and three-thirty appointment shows up at three-twenty-five, you have two vehicles on the property. So it'll let, like, basically, it is appointment only, but there's going to be some overlap, what are you going to do? Drive around the block five times while you wait for the first person to leave?
Yeah, no, that's fair, I think that's exactly right, that makes sense, and so I'm going to change it to motor vehicle services for more than two vehicles on the property at the same time. Automotive sales, um, I think is
Madam Mayor.
defined, if I remember right, so, but I will double-check that and I'll check in with the administration. And then we have commercial kitchens, dog groomers, uh, I think, uh, I'll work with Cindy and the administration to prepare that list um, and present it to, to council and the commission, um, for, because those are additional restrictions that we want to add, or may want to add. Cindy, does that work?
Absolutely. It's up to you to be able to decide.
Ms. Ruby.
Again, this is going back just an hour ago, maybe longer, about counting kids. Uh, there's no code compliance guy that I know that can get there in ten minutes to go, you have two cars.
Exactly.
Come on, common sense plays a role. And so, I mean, it's already spilled out for us on the backside of this, I don't, I don't see, this, overregulation is, is definitely, like I said, it's beaten the dead horse.
And it's a slippery slope, it's very easy to slide into the dead horse.
Well, and then you allow two cars, so they'll, you know, they're overlapping and there's three, oh my God, who's going to call, you know, complete?
Again, yeah, that's not what their intention was, most likely, you know what I mean? Like, what if one showed up an hour early and had to leave and code compliance goes, there's three there, you know, it's, we're not here to regulate.
Well, you can review.
As hard as we're looking to do here on paper right now, and we don't have the manpower.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, to Ms. Ruby here, I, I mean, I, I was just understanding, we're basically just going in and removing, saying, instead of saying motor vehicle services and automotive sales are prohibited, we're basically just striking those out at this point and letting the back speak for it, she was going to up it at this point, saying to, I, I agree with you, it's like counting the children here, but what I think does help is if we do have a cap on, for, I'm just going to use automotive sales, because that's going to be a time you're going to have a lot of vehicles. I would think most home occupations aren't going, you might have some overlap there and nobody's going to care, but if, your, your neighbor all of a sudden has four vehicles on the front lot that always have a for-sale sign in front of it, now it gives you, as another property owner, the right to say, hey, that's not okay, you're not supposed to be doing that. It's okay that you have two, but anything more than that now becomes a problem, but like, use a salon, for instance, because my, the person I go get my hair cut, she has a little thing that says please wait outside, she's appointment only, so there's only ever two people there at one time, just because again, that appointment overlap sometimes happens, I'm leaving, the next person's coming, but I think it's But I think it's, I, I mean, again, most of the time, we're, that's never going to happen. It's, there, there's some rare, rare circumstances, and the only thing I can think of is automotive sales. Or, I guess boat repairs might happen as well, where somebody's sitting there and it's constantly happening, and it gives the person that opportunity to say, hey. I don't like this and this isn't okay.
Madam Mayor. But this goes back to what Simon Brown kind of used as an example, the size matters.
So, I'm sorry, but if you've got a big area where you can put four vehicles, you know what I mean? They're probably bigger lots, bigger subdivisions, bigger, bigger area, so to speak, so here we are regulating a business. Which I am not for, so we've got a tiny area and now they've got five cars and know where to put them for sale, they're not going to do it. It's common sense. Come on, and if, and if they did, and I think it became a problem, again, there would be complaints, and we could take that as it came.
But we have to have the mechanism for the complaint, and if there's no number there, then there's no mechanism for, that's what I, that's what we're saying, is we're making sure that's in here.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing now, I think I'm removing two, three, and four. Which are the motor vehicle, automotive, I'm removing those, I'm increasing the amount of vehicles that are allowed to be. The patron vehicles allowed on the site to two for one, and I am keeping restaurants. Which I think in some ways, perhaps restaurants helps with commercial kitchens, although I, I could see, we could just say restaurants or commercial kitchens, I mean. I mean, I, I know that one seems like a water-based structure, I guess we could add restaurants.
Through the mayor.
So, oh, hold on one second, let me just, I'm almost done, sorry, let me just run through, heavy equipment, storage, or repair. And short-term rentals all stay on the prohibited as home occupation, that's what I have, so we've reduced it by half. And then you guys can decide, maybe we'll reduce it by more later. But if that sounds good, that's where I'm going with this one.
It does not sound good, if I could comment.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. So, when it goes to motor vehicle services, I think the reason that's in there. Is more to talk about what would really be considered light industrial motor vehicle services. So, to prevent something like having a paint shop open up next door, or somebody doing, you know, frame repair, or, you know. Tearing down an engine and then having to wait for parts, or working on transmissions, that sort of thing. So to, to prevent that sort of thing from happening, I think on this, you know, page seventy-two here where it talks about. Following performance standards, I think there needs to be something in there where the. For motor vehicle repairs, or motor vehicle services, I think is what it's called. That the owner of the motor vehicle must be on the property while that repair is being done. So that would then allow for the detailing, that would then allow for the installation of stereos, that would allow for the light. Sort of stuff that happens with motor vehicles, and would prohibit, you know, the, the heavier work on motor vehicles. Cause I don't think anybody wants a paint shop next door to them, I don't think anybody wants, you know, to take a car in and. Even though it sounds like a routine repair, they call NAPA and they can't get the parts and it's five days and that car is sitting there for five days, so. I think, I, I think that would solve a part of the issue, because. Here in Wassila, we have never had light industrial zoning, it's something I've always been a proponent of, but never successfully. But what this intention needs to be is to kind of prohibit light industrial type uses in residential. Commercial residential building there, so I would, you know. I would be for more, a more specific definition of motor vehicle services, or, or adding something to this. You know, performance standards that the owner of the vehicle needs to stay with it while that service is being performed.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you guys do not have consensus, so I just, you do not have consensus, so I am not changing this language. I will make a note, I think, because taking it out seems to not be, this will be on a list of things when we bring the ordinance forward, that you do not have consensus. How about we take that approach? You know, and then you guys can duke it out later. Yes? Okay, all right. So, no, and I just, I say this, you know, in order to keep us moving forward, and I feel like this is a great thing to be battling over. It's substantive, you have staff input, you have different, different thoughts that stem from your different ideas and policies. That makes for a great ordinance discussion, it's appropriate for the ordinance level, as opposed to the work session level, in my opinion.
And through, through the chair, as a reminder, you know, as we get this back from planning and the council has it. We don't have to adopt it, you don't have to adopt it to meetings, you can postpone it if you're not clear to the next meeting, till all your questions are answered. So you have tools, tools in your toolkit to make sure it's done just right.
Yes, and I, to the extent I'm rushing you, it's not to rush you to an effective adopted ordinance, it's to make sure you have one. So you control your timeline and not me, that's, that's really what I want to do, is make sure that you get there. Cindy, did you have, I cut you off, so I just wanted to check and see, I just wanted to get through the list, but it did, whether additional ones, the commercial kitchen, dog grooming. Did you say salon, or was salon brought up by, okay, would you like salon to go on the list?
So ultimately, the goal was only to bring it to your attention, and I think you captured in that last sentence, which was. To get you to think about it and decide what you wanted to do. Whether it was a heavy use, you know, maybe a commercial kitchen isn't necessarily a heavy use because they're limited by the cottage industry to only have a certain dollar amount per year. Or maybe a food truck who uses their kitchen, you know, there was some off examples, but are they a one-off, maybe? But it's just a dialogue in which you wanted to think about, and I think, like you said, is a perfect time.
Yes, and I, I think.
To come to a consensus later.
And I will tell you, so, the list provided was based on comparable communities that took a, a home occupation as an accessory use approach. So that's, that's why you have what you have, and then this allows you to develop it with intent, which is great, and staff guidance, which is fantastic. Okay, I'm moving on, whether you like it or not, no, I'm just kidding. Madam Mayor, before we move on, just one, one comment, please.
Counselor, come on.
The only comment I have is, in, in our city, when, when you're talking about things like the home salon or dog groomer business at home. Can you talk about the use of water and hair? Well, not everybody's on city water.
Right.
Or sewer, and if, if, you know, like my neighborhood, nobody's on city water and sewer, we have our own wells, we have our own septic. If I decide to do a salon or a dog business and I got a lot of water and hair going into my septic, that's on me, I'm going to have to have my, paid, have my septic pumped a lot. That doesn't affect the city infrastructure. So it's just something to keep in mind, please, as, as we move forward with these, thank you.
So parking, and. On, okay. Parking, sixteen sixty-five twenty, an exception for use of off-street parking was added to subsection B for West Nelson Avenue. For request of Public Works Director during meeting, and there was no objection from council members on that front. The council members all expressed objection to subsection D three, which required additional storage areas. So you reduce regulation by removing the requirement for those additional storage areas. I inserted concrete as an approved durable surface in subsection E two for parking. And specify that an alternative surface could be used if approved by the planner, I think this was Councilmember Johnson. And I also think concrete might have come up at the Planning Commission too, so that's sort of where that came from. During the September ninth meeting, council struggled with this provision, given the burden it placed on mixed-use development. In an effort to address the problem, before phase two revisions, I added a provision to E four. That allows an applicant to get a conditional use permit, allowing for a different number of parking spaces. So once again, adding some flexibility through the conditional use permit, yes, you have to come and ask, but at least you have an opportunity to. Council also worried that snow storage provision was too rigid, we added some flexibility by expressly allowing the commission to grant different storage requirements. Using the, again, the conditional use permit process for snow storage. The next one is sixteen seventy-two, I'm going to skip that, we talked about that plenty. The water sewage stormwater and drainage system, so Public Works Director added the reference to stormwater, an important part of the city system. This is, we are still talking about what contribution permits should look like in the city. And instead of regulating a lot of these uses based on the, the burden on water. Do we want to permit, that can create a contribution permit, so we understand at the beginning. What uses are placing a burden, potentially placing a burden on our systems, and so if that is the case. And the Public Works Director and I will work on a change to Title thirteen. Title thirteen is where your contribution permits that apply now only to industrial users. And a lot of those provisions are, so trying to create a better system to actually ensure the health and safety of our systems. And allowing public works to, to weigh in on application procedures and make sure that those permits are in place. So if you are considering a conditional use permit for a change in use, you can also see that that's, you know, you can. Look at that, that burden that's placed on the system.
Madam Mayor, question to you actually here.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, could we have our Public Works Director here next time we look at this? There's some parts in here, I had some questions that I felt like he'd be useful to be here for.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and then sixteen eighty-two five, general landscaping requirements and standards. Per council comments, I changed subsection B four of this provision to apply to all trees, not just evergreen trees. And to require five feet in height rather than six feet. I'm just going to turn to the planner and see if the, if, if the administration was okay with that, or if you guys have had a chance to delve into that one.
The, as far as for the landscape portion of it?
Yeah, just the trees and, and just expanding, I think the Public Works Director weighed in at the time and didn't have. Too much of a concern, but then I think on, on really looking back and, and spending more time with it, he might have. There were some concerns that he might have raised, that he might have wanted to raise, so I just wanted to check.
I was actually, I was thinking that there may have been more discussion, so we may have to bring that part back.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, this was a conversation, I think, that Ms. Ruby and I were having, we had brought up about the trees was. The concern of finding trees that high, if you recall, we had it at six feet and all we've gone down is a foot. I still felt like that was way too high, I mean, I, if I recall, when I, I personally went, I just hopped online, that was the easiest I, I can do at the time. I thought we were talking like two feet was what we were hoping, or something like that, really what we wanted was call Jacobs Green, Jacobson's Greenhouse and say, hey. What's the average tree you're going to plant at that point?
Yeah, because they start out at two and a half to three feet.
Two and a, yeah, so I, I think.
So I think from what Cindy is telling me, your Public Works Director is okay with that. You know, that's his recommendation too, yes?
Yes, but we can triple check as well.
So. All right, so we're going to move that down to three feet or two?
Two.
Two, okay.
So, Madam Mayor, yeah, so, looking back, just because I've had to do my own landscaping with businesses. Like, they get trees that are two and a half, they're three feet barely if they've been sitting there for a year or two, so it's one of those things that. We'd asked, you know, Eric, Public Works, to check and double check with Jacobson's and Kins to make sure what is the, the average height you get. Because we don't want to say two and a half if they're only getting two foot, yeah, two feet. So, but I don't want to cut them shy if they're, you know what I mean, like, I don't, it's not for me to decide, it's, it's more so what are, what's available, what can we do? And of course, we want to purchase locally from all the greenhouses.
So would we say eighteen inches in height then, foot and a half?
We don't get to decide that.
I'm just saying, like.
The research we ask for Public Works to do, they get to decide that and bring it back to us.
Putting, so, does it work for me to just change it to two and then flag it for input from Public Works Director? And I'll work with the administration, we'll put it on our to-do list, man, okay, so we will add that one. All right, roof repair or replacement was added to subsection B four in sixteen eighty-five-ten, non-conforming structural uses. And this was just really to add some clarity, because we, Councilmember Cottle was focused on is. Someone choosing not to repair the roof, creating a health and safety risk within the city. Because they thought that that would go beyond the repair, I think it fit within the definition that we had before. But I don't think it was as clear, and I liked, I liked the added language as well, division five.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Shields.
I apologize, I realize it's nine oh five, but in our recess, I was talking to Holly. And I'd like to back up to division three for just a short minute. And that would be, with our comp plan being worked on right now, I would suggest to the council and other commission members. That the downtown overlay be suspended, if not eliminated. And that's, it's affecting the comp plan, it's affecting many things, it's eleven years old, I think. So, I think it's even affecting the design of the couplet. So, I think it's, may not be in line with the future needs and wants of the city, so I would suggest that. Downtown overlay at least be suspended if not repealed. That's all I have to add, thanks for letting me to go backwards, everyone.
So in line with that, if, if council and the commission wanted to consider that, if council would consider that, what I would recommend is. We can leave it in this ordinance, as we prepare the ordinance, we can take direction to bring to council and, and the commission alongside. The ordinance, a map, so you see the districts that currently exist in the downtown overlay district. So what happens if it were to be repealed, what laws and land use provisions are governing court components? I think the other thing would be considering, if that happens, understanding. What that means for property owners in the downtown overlay district, and the difference between, say, a suspension. Which you would have a date certain, in which it became effective again, or repeal. And maybe at that point, given the nature of that, I think it may be worth having a resolution, or even. A non-codified ordinance where you're laying out things you expect to be taken up. As part of the comp plan process, or the planning commission is saying, these need to be taken up, so it doesn't get forgotten. You know, and so that you are looking at that, but that way you're giving it full consideration. And then, if you decide to repeal it, if someone amends it to remove that chapter. Then I think you want to provide an extra meeting, an extra hearing, you know, so if you are introducing it and you remove it on introduction. You want to bring it back for introduction after, or, or call it a substitution. So that would just be my, what I would add to that, if that is something that you guys want to consider.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, to the mayor, to the lawyer, attorney. So if we were to suspend or delete that, did that affect other economic development grants and programs in the city?
I don't know, I mean, that's a good question, I don't think that many programs or grants would be based on compliance with an overlay district. So much as, I think that, I mean, it, it, based on compliance with the law when they're in place. I think the biggest thing with the suspension, the question is what are you really doing, right? If you suspend something, when you're a property owner, or you're engaging in a use, most. Most businesses and users are making an analysis regarding the long-term use or long-term development of a parcel. Or they're constructing something with the, with compliance in mind, right, more long-term. So suspension, I'm not sure that that will do much, except for allow some of those more incidental uses that may be prohibited now. To be able to happen, which might have an impact on some of those projects you're talking about, but I think it's different than. But I think it's different than, you know, you kind of have a law in limbo. So it gives some flexibility on how you're maintaining your parking or snow storage or something that might have. But you're probably not gonna rent property that would not otherwise be permitted based on a suspended district, so that would be my guess. That's the analysis I would be performing. A repeal would likely change that significantly, right? So, but I don't recommend you repeal it without understanding what is left.
Through the chair to the attorney. So I almost am sitting here wondering if that is something the planning commission wishes to take up in whatever form. So they pass a resolution requesting that the council either repeal or suspend it and have very clear reasoning as to their recommendation. And I almost see that as a separate track. So I would say you, I feel like the timeline, people are very anxious, we wanna get this done with. I feel like dealing with the overlay is, we set a phase two, but now if it's get rid of it, repeal it, that's its own process. But that's just me.
And we can definitely do that. And then, if you do it that way and the commission is bringing it up, it doesn't necessarily mean that the timing won't catch up with Title sixteen. We just, you know, but if it's on a separate track, they can run together or they can run separate. So.
I, I would agree with the clerk there, I think that's something that the planning commission just passes a resolution to us saying, this is what we think, which is what I think the code says for them to do, is essentially provide recommendations for changes here. I think again, I, I mean, I'm one of the timeline people at this point here, so. I, I think because we're not making any substantive changes to that portion of the code, I think it makes sense to leave it as is right now. Again, I, I am with Mr. Seals though, I, I, I do think it's something that does need to be addressed. But because it's such a significant change that's the comp plan, I feel like the comp plan would actually really say, hey, either you need to change it or remove it type of thing. I think the comp plan's also gonna tell us that too.
And with a resolution from the planning commission might inform that, even that discussion at the comp plan too, so. Okay, so from what I'm hearing, I mean, and under all scenarios, it's left into the draft, so, okay. Moving on, division five, permits and reviews. I conducted initial research regarding communication towers and I won't go into it, but we have chapter sixteen point seven-two, which will also go onto a separate track. I added section, subsection C to sixteen point ninety-five, which incorporates a fee for a conditional use permit application. That is something that we'll wanna pay attention to before passage. So we are into division six. See, that one was really easy. And I think part of the reason why is a lot of our focus when creating the Title sixteen changes was to change those administrative hearing procedures and permitting procedures. So they've gotten, got a lot of attention by everybody, council, commission, as we move along. The next chapter is really, we're looking at our appeals and our administration and enforcement. One, I have received some excellent feedback from staff on this. One thing that they recommended is the adoption of a lien provision, which allows, you know, as we step back regulation and, and allow for enforcement to be a greater tool, having a lien authority included or incorporated into the ordinance will make sure that the city, their enforcement can go for collections, they can go for court action in certain circumstances. But they can also, if they're not getting fines paid and there's a continued violation, they can place a lien on the property, which often will encourage people to correct the violation and come to compliance. I have not added that in yet, I've added it into the draft I'm working on now, but those are comments that I received. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. So once again, we changed interested person to interest, interested party, that's just consistency of terms. I'm not gonna go into all of that, I think, I'm on page thirty and thirty-one. I think these changes are pretty, they're, they're not that substantial and you just will look them over and decide if you wanna submit comments. The one that is substantial that I really wanna talk to you about, I think we said fifteen hundred feet and then we changed it to five hundred feet. And I think that the commission recommended twelve hundred feet. And so the question is, what square foot, what foot, sorry, what square footage do we want, or what amount of, what distance do we want to require notice to go out to neighboring properties regarding a permit? So if you have someone who's getting a permit, council is looking at five hundred feet. And so one of the things that council directed us to do is to come back and kind of show you what five hundred feet looks like. And I believe in your packet, there were handouts. So that is the difference between five hundred feet and fifteen hundred feet. And I think commissions, and I will let the commission's members speak for themselves, but they really prefer five hundred feet, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred feet at this time. Twelve hundred, twelve hundred. Okay, sorry, twelve hundred. They would prefer twelve hundred be maintained at this time. And so, again.
Madam Mayor, sorry.
Mr. Seals.
Yeah, the, the planning commission went with the larger number rather than the smaller number to make sure that more of the community was involved in the process. Rather than shrinking to the five hundred feet, we pretty much all agreed twelve hundred feet was the better choice so that more of the public could be informed. Thank you.
So that is something that, and I guess I'm just, I can do two things. I can change it to twelve hundred feet, given the recommendations of the planning commission and council consider whether or not to drop it later. I can leave it at five hundred feet and council can consider, you know, what to do with that and the commission when they, you know, when they're looking at, that might be something where you might be, there might be a difference regarding the commission's recommendation and council's preference, but, okay. I don't see anybody feeling, I don't hear very clear indications one way or the other. So I will just, will keep this on our list of things we are flagging that are, there is no consensus.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Could, my thing would be, could we get maybe a different example that's not, doesn't have a giant highway running through the middle of it? Cause I think a better example might be going to like a residential neighborhood or like a commercial air property that's bordering more residential. And, and, cause if you look at this, not the greatest example, cause when you think about just using this as the example here, look at all the people on the opposite side of the highway here. Cause I, from what I'm looking at, my guess is we dropped a pin on City Hall and blew a radius around that. And so like all of these people down here might not care in this example, but if you were to put it in a residential right on the edge of, or a, a, a commercial business on the edge of a residential area, we're gonna see a little bit more of what it looks like instead of having all of this running through. But honestly, I still am leaning a little bit more towards a five hundred foot radius than a twelve hundred foot radius in my mind. That's where I leave.
Well, what about through the chair to every, I, I just can, will share one personal experience and this is certainly a policy decision, but I remember one time a permit going out and it was, you ended up, within the twelve hundred feet, you went down this huge cliff, not cliff, but a gully. I mean, pretty good substantial gully, out and over. And every, I still didn't get how they were really impacted, but, but, I mean, that's strictly a policy decision. So topography maybe, I don't know.
And one important thing to, I think the thing that is, you know, the policy consideration here is you have someone applying for a permit to do something on their property. It is different than the public's desire to be engaged in legislation or the zoning district because you have an individual interest in the property. And so one person is heavily interested and a lot of times the guy, the person across the street is also heavily interested, right? And the person maybe three blocks down may be heavily interested, depending on what's gonna happen with this property. But is the person in another zoning district or down the, are they heavily interested? Where normally we're aiming at getting that public involvement. Quasi judicial proceedings, you want public, you want it to be open, you want the public to be able to attend. But it's not, the goal is not to allow the public to participate. You know, the public being able to witness it and make sure that it's fair and the process is there and be able to go into the room and we're not having secret hearings, absolutely. But they are not a, a party to that proceeding until they make themselves one, right? And they, the way to think about it is going into a court of law, right? If somebody is being accused of something or someone is suing someone for some reason, you know, as members of the public, you may be able to come in the back of the room and watch the proceedings, but are you able, are you getting individual pleadings and notices sent to your home about what is happening? And unless there's some kind of interest. So I, I don't, that's one way to think about it as you consider. I think what we could do, maybe, is when we bring, assuming you decide to move forward with an ordinance, we can bring representations for different districts. Cindy, is that something we can do? I, I'm actually not.
Yeah, and I was pulling some up now, but yes.
Is that, okay.
Absolutely.
That'd be great. And then we can see, this is what it looks like with property and rural residential. This is, you know, we may not be able to predict every.
Holly, before they changed the regulations on a restaurant license for beer and wine, you used to have to get, I think it was three hundred and fifty signatures in a radius. I can't remember what the radius was. Do you know?
One mile.
One mile? And when tacos Cancun went in, they couldn't get three hundred and fifty because they wasn't that many residents within that one mile. When Basil Ginger went in, they couldn't get because they weren't three hundred and fifty residents in that one mile. So that's something for you to consider.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Brown.
A good example is the impact the sewer is having. The people within five hundred feet is less impacted than the people twelve hundred feet out. So just be careful, I understand there's different solutions to every problem, but the sewers are a good example where the people right around the sewer plant is less impacted than those twelve feet, ten hundred feet down line from that, according to the briefing we got from the director. So I, I think that twelve hundred feet is, need to stay in place and I don't think it's gonna change how many people participate or complain, but at least it's there in case.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor.
Holly.
So we're, the notices here are saying that if you don't receive a notice essentially, so if we shrink it down to five hundred, for instance, you're not allowed to appeal or come down and comment and basically voice your concern.
I don't know.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking this question kinda just to clarify a situation here, I'm not.
Oh, I see.
Like, that's where I'm going here, I'm just.
Yes, you can absolutely still participate, you could have an interest, you can.
You can still be an interested party.
Yes.
So that's where I'm at.
It's just, it's just the obligation of notice.
Correct, so I mean.
And there's actually posting on the website for, yes, direct notice, thank you.
And that's what I'm getting at, is these people still have an oppor, even if you, if, let's just say we shrunk it down to five hundred, maybe here we went down to six or seven hundred, it doesn't have to be five hundred. That was just an example, I think because some other communities offered five hundred. Other people could still come down and participate in the meeting if they feel like they're going to be impacted. All this is doing is just saying, hey, as a city, we believe these people are gonna be most likely impacted, directly impacted by whatever this person's wanting to do on a lot, so we're, this is why we're notifying you. But because you, even though you might not be within five hundred feet, you're, you know, you're the next lot over, just using these as an example, you know, you're one lot outside of this five hundred foot radius. You could still come down, you voice your concern, it passes, you could then still file an appeal. Am, am I correct in saying that?
Correct, and it doesn't, LaSilla is, is not requiring the level of aggrieved status that we find in a lot of communities with our land use, which would look more to harm, not just participation. So your appeal process is really based on, okay, if you're going to appeal, you're going to participate. Or, or you're not going to have that, right? You're not an interested party.
Real quick, so, so the only thing I would say is, let's just say we did drop it down. If you come down to testify, you, we probably need to know where you live at that point so that you're not, cause using this as an example, somebody who's doing something here on this lot, I live out in Mission Hills and I go, I'm, I don't like this, I don't want somebody having an automotive shop here on this property. Well, in all honesty, am I really that affected by it? How much weight should the planning commission put on my testimony? They're probably gonna weigh my testimony a little bit less than the person that literally lives next door at that point. So we would want, that would be the only thing I'd say, is you'd wanna know. Cause I mean, that's part of their job is to determine, hey, is this really impacting people? Or is, you know, John Doe just coming down here because he wants to complain because he doesn't want it in his backyard, even though it's not in his backyard type of situation.
Yeah, and I do think when the planning commission is sitting in their quasi judicial role, they'll ask questions, if a person's participating, they have the right to do that. And so it's a, your point is well taken, that it goes really to credibility and weight of the testimony that they're receiving, you know, and, and how much they give that. They might, there might be another issue that they're like, actually, it involves a, a characteristic that is felt directly further down the chain and they're providing testimony then, you know, has more power than someone close. So it's, it's.
Okay, Mr. Stafford.
So if the limit's at five hundred and I live at six hundred feet, yes, the information's on the city website, but who cruises the city website every day to tell you what changes are there? And I know it's, I believe they're also posted at the post office.
Who goes there?
Well, yeah, so I, I, me as a commissioner, I want as much information as possible to make my decision, to make the best decision possible. And so I would prefer the biggest crowd possible, who've been notified in the biggest radius possible. I mean, they're, you know, within reason, so that I can have as much information as possible. And I'd like for them to, I feel like the city should be more proactive in informing them than just simply posting on the website and if you live at six hundred feet, too bad, so sad you didn't check the website this week. So that's just as a commissioner, I want the information to just be able to make a fair judgment and to hear what the public has to say. The only reason I could see is limiting it is to save somebody on postage. Is there any other reason why we would limit the notification area?
The rights of the permit holder, that's why. I mean, you know, because remember, you have someone who's coming to you, they meet all the requirements in here to apply for a conditional use permit for the use in X district. They've taken the risk, they bought the property, they're coming to you for the conditional use permit, they've crossed their teeth, they've dotted their eyes, they've studied it and they've prepared an application for you with all the evidence they can possibly think about. And the next step is we are notifying members of the public to come in and weigh in on their application. And how big that is, maybe we say we want the entirety of the city of LaSilla to be part of this permitting process. Or maybe we say we want twelve hundred feet, you know, and so, or we want five hundred feet. But that's the other way to look at it, and I'm not saying your way is wrong. I'm just saying this is the other side, right? The other side is, we wanna get as close to the people that are actually impacted by that short-term rental or by that cattery, I don't know, like I'm just, whatever it is. And some, some uses, it might be a bigger, you know, it might be a bit, and, and LaSilla's not limiting anybody's participation, which is, you know, that's, that's really great. But I think that would be the argument for direct notice being more limited.
Makes sense, thank you.
But I think the reasons you have, the commission members have given for having more notice is not without, I mean, there's nothing inappropriate about that, it is, you know, I think it's just a matter of policy.
Madam Mayor, DeYoung here. So actually, that's not true, we just had a big, we just approved a big permit for a person that came with his realtor and he had not purchased the property until he got the, the, you know, the permission. So a lot of these guys aren't dumb and they are not purchasing the property until they get, they go through all the steps, but they don't actually spend the money until they get that conditional use permit or whatever.
Which is great, yeah, that's, that's a great.
That's not true, all, all the time.
Oh, no, I, yes, okay, sorry, and, and I, that's great. Like, I think it's great that they can preemptively, but the question was really, you know, why, I think it was, why would any, why would you do this except to save on postage? So what I'm saying is, the reason why you would do it is to. treat the applicant who has the property interest that's subject to the due process requirements and all of those things, you know, trying to limit the scope of who you're directly engaging with to come and be a part of their process. But I, that, I actually think having them get the conditional use permit application process early is, you know, it's great that the code currently and the new one will allow for that.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. And the important part of what you just spent five minutes saying had to do with property rights. And the property right gives you the right to apply. It doesn't give you the right to use the property because you're asking for a conditional use permit, which falls outside the code. So you have the right to apply. So we're not denying anybody any rights uh, by saying we're gonna use twelve hundred feet instead of five hundred feet. They still have the right to apply. Uh, you know, just like I have the right, uh, to come and to talk and in favor or object to it, or just, or just to listen. We're not denying anybody any rights by, uh, you know, uh, going to a larger audience, uh, for direct contact as far as notification goes.
Absolutely not. And I think, you know, I think what you might just say is the most important part of what I just said. But no, I, I, you're, you're absolutely right, you're not doing anything wrong, and all you're doing is adding more public notice. I am, the, the only thing I was saying was that there is a, there's more than just postage in your policy considerations, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Ms. Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what is the borough's radius?
I cannot remember off the top of my head. I think there are several that are twelve hundred in, or near there, in the Massey Borough. So I have to go back. And so I have seen everything, and I, I think we actually broke this down at some point, and gave the square footage and, or I'm sorry, the footage in each community. And I may have forgotten to bring that, or that might have been something we did before. So let me get that out, so that, well, I'll bring that with a breakdown of exact, um, because I know we did that research, and it will just be a laundry list of communities.
Yeah.
And I think they range from twelve hundred, a lot of five hundreds. Um, I don't, I think there was maybe one community that dropped below five hundred to like two seventy-five, but.
I'd be curious to see what Sedana said too, since we pulled a lot of our stuff.
And a lot of these places are smaller too, so, you know, if you're smaller, two seventy-five might include half, I mean, in some towns, that's the entire town.
Right, well, we are only twelve miles.
So I, normally I'd be able to just quickly pull this up and give you examples exactly like what you wanted to see in the different, um, but the borough's having a little bit of an issue with, with their site momentarily, but a great partnership with them, though. We really appreciate it, all that they have. This is a wonderful tool, you can quickly go on and, and do lots of samples.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Johnson.
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
I apologize to everybody on the council, and you, Madam Mayor, uh, due to the very late hour where I am, I'm going to have to drop off. Uh, good night.
All right.
No. Another theme in Councilmember Johnson.
Can we ask if he has any comments before he drops?
Good night.
Do you have comments?
He's gone.
He's out.
He's gone.
Uh, Councilmember Johnson left at nine thirty-four P M.
So I think the PowerPoint may have gotten bad too. All right, so what I'm gonna do, because I believe council and the commissioner, one of the, asked for this list, and I know we prepared it, and I think I just failed to, and forgot to bring um, or add it to the materials. So I'm gonna bring a laundry list of all of the places with the next version. Um, and then, um, so one of the things I worked on with Division Six was really working through timing on our appeals procedures and filing and permitting, and just getting the numbers right. Um, making sure that the amount of time we provided for an appeal and notice of hearings and the preparation of the record, all that actually fit together, which it didn't really do very harmoniously before. And made sure that the, um, planner has enough discretion when setting hearings and deadlines for hearings, and the planning commission, uh, to prevent the planning commission from being completely inundated with hearings on a given day, you know, because that is, that could be really difficult to manage. So we wanna make sure that it's a more of a controlled, you know, there's time and there's discretion to schedule those hearings. And that's in sixteen one fifteen thirty. It requires that a hearing be scheduled thirty to ninety days after the notice of hearing is distributed and posted. This ensures that the interested parties have enough time to file position statements, that the planner has time to prepare and distribute the record, and interested parties have enough time to review that record. So here we're actually making efforts to protect those interested parties, um, and make sure that they can engage in submitting evidence and participating and preparing to participate. So neighboring property owners, and again, we just talked about this. So the section regarding, um, uh, notification of neighboring property owners was removed, and it was just incorporated into sixteen one fifteen thirty, just to make it shorter. Um, preparation of record, I removed the publication and notice provisions from that section, which involved preparation of the record and not notice. I relocated those provisions into the notice section and removed, removed redundant language. This is just tightening up, cleaning up, making sure these things are easier to follow. And we added a subsection to identify what is to be included in the record. This is just to make life easier for people who are responsible for the record. Right now you have an amazing team in your clerk's office, and they understand record compilation, and they've been working with hearing officers for a long time, but, you know, you want your code to be able to stand on its own without that level of expertise. I included a provision for hearings that allows the commission to allow a party to participate, but did not submit a position statement. Um, changed references to written arguments to position statements, just to make it broader. Um, and included a requirement that the position statement actually state the party's position. That's just, you know, sometimes people are moving fast, they're not used to the process, they forget to tell you what they want. Um, and that's, that's hard. Uh, so the appeals to the planning commission section, I removed the publication notice provision from this section. The time period was changed to run from the deadline for position statements, to ensure that these statements could be included in the record. So you're making sure that the planning commission has access and has all this information. Um, and I, let's see, that is the same. Um, this is different, and the clerk and I haven't had a chance to discuss this, uh, very thoroughly, although we've discussed it in passing before. I went to remove the provision that, uh, allowed for waiving the filing fee for individuals who are in, indigenous, you know? Um, but, um, upon careful review of, um, case precedent, especially when you have, you know, um, constitutional rights or property rights, right, you have property rights involved, um, I was nervous to just completely take it out. Now, I don't think that we've raised the level where, I know we don't, where you have to provide, um, uh, you know, legal counsel for individuals or things like that, but we've raised a lot, there are rates that are being raised, and so I thought maybe we'd start with a limitation that doesn't put the clerk in a position to apply discretion to this determination, and so I added that a, uh, they will, uh, will be considered indigent for purposes of waiving the filing fee if that appellant's tax return demonstrates that the appellant is at or below that one hundred percent poverty level for Alaska's. So I feel like that's an easy thing, they put it in, and they're like, I'm here. And the, so we, I, I don't know, Jamie, are you, okay, so it's, okay.
Thank you, I don't like discretion.
So we'll start there, and then if you want to go, you know, does anybody have any problem with keeping that provision in? Okay, or the one hundred percent poverty level? Uh, I'm going to quickly run through the commission's recommendations, it's important that you hear them, because a lot of these are, may not be applicable right now. Um, and, but, and a lot of the planning commission's recommendations were incorporated into Title Sixteen. But these are recommendations that may apply to Phase Two as well, so I wanted to run through them. So, uh, the Commissioner Stanford recommended that the definition of junkyard be considered in light of fencing and the potential for making the definition subject to visibility. So I think that's really, we're, we're gonna work on the definition of junkyard. I am going to review that and look at those, uh, those aspects and bring that into the next draft, or in the ordinance, uh, unless somebody has an objection to fine tuning that definition in those ways, okay. Commission discussed interplay between nuisance provisions regarding home occupation such as noise pollution. I thought this was a really interesting discussion. The nuisance provisions in the city are in Title Eight. Um, those provisions are, um, couldn't use an update, and so when we do that, and they also, those provisions involve a different enforcement procedure. And so making sure that those nuisance provisions have the same enforcement, potential choice of enforcement, because you also can go get an injunction, right, with the court. But I think that's really important. So this is something that the planning commission brought up. What I'm going to do now, unless I hear otherwise, is I'm going to incorporate the hearing procedures from Title Sixteen, I'm going to apply them to Title Eight through Title Sixteen, and then sort of loop those two together. We're going to have to update Title Eight to make that, um, as clear as possible, but that's one way to kind of tie it. Anybody have any problem with that? Okay, good. Commissioner Brown noted that Department of Fish and Game regarding, regarding new list of invasive species and discussion regarding the incorporation of that list into the code. So this is the question, um, we can add an invasive species definition and restriction, um, we do have um, some references to invasive species, and what, but we don't define it, and we don't expressly prohibit it. We prohibit it through other definitions, so, um, my inclination is to add the definition per council, our commission's recommendation, and then, um, you know, and prohibit it where, you know, where it is appropriate. Is everybody okay with that? I didn't, I, I don't know about the list, and I think I need to do a little more research on that. So I will bring the list, um, and see if there's a way to incorporate it, but I think it would just really be incorporated into the definition. Like, an invasive species is a species that is included on a list maintained by the State of Alaska Department of Fish and Game. Something like that, okay. And that one, I, that's what change is already incorporated. Chairman Seals raised the option of suspending the downtown overlay district in light of the conflict construction. So I think that we've had a discussion there, and again, this, I, you know, and I encouraged Chair Seals to raise this, not in his comments at the end, but in the middle of the discussion, because it's so important, and to make sure he could get, uh, uh, council and the commission conversation on it, not just sort of the passive comments, okay. Okay. So the commission looked through the fire chief comments and reviewed his recommendations, uh, regarding the, uh, safety, fire safety provisions, and those were, those were all incorporated into the code. Questions were posed by the commission, does the city compliance officer have the ability to make a judgment call regarding violations? The answer to that question was yes. And, uh, let's, I, I just wanted to note that the administration, uh, discussed at the commission meeting, which is helpful for council as well, how do those, how do we deal with enforcement? A lot of it comes through complaints. And I'm not gonna go through all of these comments, you all have them, the, a lot of them we have addressed, we addressed the twelve hundred feet. Um, and we, um, I guess the one thing, look, look, we're done. So, the one thing I would say is, um, the commission is really interested in seeing very good, user-friendly materials produced contemporaneously with the rollout of Title Sixteen. So people know what they're doing and what the changes are, and so what that looks like is something I'd like to see on the agenda alongside Title Sixteen. I am sorry, that was probably the longest, um, meeting I have attended at the city of LaSilla. I'm sorry that I'm the reason for that. Any other comments or questions, otherwise I'm done.
Madam Mayor, super quick, I looked up the borough at six hundred feet.
Okay, do I have a motion to exit committee of the whole?
I make a motion to exit committees of the whole.
Okay, is there a second?
Rubio seconds.
It has been moved by Commissioner Seals and seconded by Councilperson Rubio to exit committee of the whole. So we are now out, and I will open audience comments, seeing how, there's nobody in the audience, I will close audience comments. We are now at Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, the council mayor will be out of state, correct me, Mayor, if I'm wrong, March sixth through twenty-first. And so. Twenty-second, okay, thank you, ma'am. And so for our meeting on March tenth, council members Cottle, Johnson, and Rubio will also be out of town, but they will be participating telephonically. So the next question is, who chairs the meeting? We don't have that in code, but per policy, it's the long, it's the council member that's currently serving with the longest longevity, so that would be Councilmember Vialak, so she'll be chairing the meeting. And then I've talked to all of you, touched base with everybody, but remember, if you haven't turned in your P O F D or filed your P O F D, please do so, that deadline is March fifteenth, and APOC does assess penalties for late. They do, so, anyway, thank you, great meeting, you guys, great discussions, city attorney, fantastic, so thank you.
Madam Attorney.
I am sorry, that was very long.
Councilmember Crafton.
Thank you. Mayor, uh, just wanna say, good meeting, everybody, it was, I, I know four hours long, but I think, uh, getting through this all is very helpful to us, and the discussion was really, really good, I'm looking forward to, I know Ms. Rubio is as well. We're both looking forward to, to being done with this, but again, we still wanna make sure it's fully vetted, and something that we feel comfortable passing. A quick question to the clerk, you said the person with the longest longevity. Uh, is that currently serving, or would that be better suited for somebody that has been here with the council the longest?
Currently serving, so this, this terms.
So, so two, two terms in a row, basically, okay.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would agree with Councilperson Crafton that this was a very productive, uh, session, and I appreciate, uh, everybody's participation in there. One thing I will say is, uh, you know, I'm not the smartest guy in the room. But, you know, I do have a college education, I know how to read, and this meeting would've gone a whole lot faster if I'd have had this document three days prior, and I would've been able to read it instead of having it read to me. Uh, that, to me, seemed like an incredible, I won't say a waste of time, but an incredible use of time, uh, which could be better. I mean, we have expectations that everybody at the DIAS, uh, you know, be prepared for these meetings, and we can't be prepared if we don't get this, uh, sort of stuff here. I mean, I hear right here on the front, it says it was received in the, in the, uh, uh, office of the, of the clerk today. You know, I mean, we, we need, if we're gonna be prepared for meetings, we need to have what's there. Because essentially, this is a staff report from you, very extensive, great job on it, but, you know, if we don't have it in advance, we really can't be prepared for the meeting. And so my suggestion, uh, to you, Madam Attorney, and to any, any of the staffers or any of the other council people here is, you know, get your stuff together, nothing says it has to be ready when it comes to agenda-setting time, but at least three days prior, you know? I mean, if we could at least get it on Thursday or Friday and have a chance to look at it, I think things would go a lot better, and you'd have a lot more uh, substantive discussion as opposed to picking things apart, but, uh, anyway, great meeting, great information. No, I'm not picking on you, I'm just making a very friendly and very highly suggestive statement there, so, but, uh, uh, but yeah, it's great to have everybody here, and I'm sure we'll all be glad to go home, thanks.
Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Holly, awesome job. I just wanna say, you know, to Councilman Graham, sometimes, you know, a team has to grind, and, uh, And uh, it's, it's a playbook, and it's not always written out for us, but I think, hey, look at the time, you said eleven, and we are out by ten, so I'm gonna say, go team, we did amazing, okay? Um, quick question though, for our city planner, I don't know if anyone else has noticed, um, the sign, uh, Summit Worship out on K G B.
Mm-hmm, it's huge.
So, can the city planner talk about that, or?
They have, uh, they have, you had a meeting Friday, and um, according to their permit, the sign was to be put back where the old sign was and the same size. And they're coming in to see me. And they, anyway, long story short, yeah, we are well aware.
So it's out of code.
Well, you're a gentleman.
And placement.
Yeah. I remember where that sign was, and I remember how big it was.
Okay, just to double-checking on it, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Passion.
I'm on it. Councilmember Cottle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, really good meeting tonight, very productive. Um, it seems like the more we end up discussing things, the more questions that come up and the little nuances that, you know, we maybe hadn't thought of. But that's all part of the process, and it's an important part of the process, and I wanna commend administration, all the staff, our commission, and the council members for the time that we all put into this. We want this to be right, we want this to be user-friendly for the public. Um, I, I think we have accomplished a lot, and yep, there's always gonna be those questions, and we get, we get stuck on things once in a while, but that is all part of the process, and that helps us move forward to have a better output when we're done. And I just wanna commend everybody for their work and thank everybody for it.
Okay, thank you, and Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank everyone for the input, and I missed our track.
Friends is still on.
Commissioner Seals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Brown, I missed it too. I'd almost forgot. No, I really appreciate this, uh, all the work that everybody's put into this. It's very important for the future of our city. I've watched Wasilla for the last fifty years, and my hope is for the next fifty years to be bright and prosperous for all the citizens of Wasilla. So thank you all very much.
Commissioner Langill.
Yes, good meeting, uh, enjoyed hearing perspective of all the council members and the commissioners, look forward to the final product, everybody have a safe drive home.
Commissioner DeYoung.
I thought it was a great meeting, and um, I'm not picking on you, but we were given this, and I went through it, and I appreciate the notes, because I took notes and, um, you know, I'm busy too, and, but I took the time because I feel like I'm the youngest one here, and I needed to catch up, so, um, I appreciate these packets that we get, and I like the little Cliff Notes, cause then I can refer back to them, so thank you, you did a great job.
Commissioner Stafford.
It's late, so no further comments.
And that's my turn, I truly appreciate, you know, this has been a long time coming. And um, I appreciate everybody's work on it, even though it's right now ten o'clock. Um, it's, this probably won't be the last time that we're here at ten o'clock. I don't know if I can still wait to get home or not, but anyway, thank you all for your time, and I think this will serve uh, the citizens of Wasilla really well, and with the way we're growing and everything, we have to really take an in-depth look to make sure that we stay up with what's happening in the city. So thank you all again for your time, and with no further business to come before this uh, council, I will adjourn at nine fifty-five.
You should've did ten.
Commissioner Landill.